That's a big offer, alright. What do you think? Welcome to the Highland Valley City Council Early Work Session. I know you think you're gonna be up, but I'm gonna do a quick reverse so that once you get started, then you do your presentation. So council, we're gonna look at clarification of consent or action items on the council on the agenda tonight. Does anybody have anything that they have an explanation on? If there's anything with Chief Prime, I've given him a two-minute time limit. That's it, so. And Chief, if you want to briefly, and I mean seriously, you got one minute, actually. If you want to tell about that, what we have on the agenda briefly.
Thanks, Mayor. A customary honorary to issue department issue firearms to members who retire from the department. There's two different issues, one from our previous employee or from a current one. Biggest issue back in the time in 2020 was COVID. Maybe not a clear understanding of if we could do it or not at that point in time based on a retirement issue. So hopefully I clearly explained that in the agenda background. And I can't cover everything, but if you had a question, I'd answer it now. I hope that just gives them to consent and that you support that for those two people who did 2020.
And this will be handled by resolution going forward if we ever have that again, so. Yeah, and Kevin has got that all established now, so. And council, those two items could be moved to consent if that was, yeah, just remember that.
I mean, why couldn't we move 15?
Is there anything else?
I mean, 15.
Oh, I'm sorry, 15?
Can we move it? I mean, isn't that self-explanatory, no school, no school zone? I mean, just.
Pretty self-explanatory, you don't know what Ron said.
I'm just putting it out there.
And there's some other cleanup to that, but it's nothing significant.
Yeah, no schools.
No problem.
The only question I had have to you would be, the first of two reads, do they have to be read separately or can it be done in?
It has to be done two reads, charter requires two reads of all ordinances.
But because it's a one of two reads, does it have to be on the regular agenda items or can it be?
Both of them would be put on.
No, because the mayor, the mayor reads through the captions of everything that's on the agenda, even on consent agenda anyway, so that constitutes the first reading. So I'm not doing it.
If you want to move that also, then.
Yeah, I would do that.
Yeah.
Okay. And we were one minute on all the explanations. Anybody else have anything? Okay, then we are gonna go with, we're gonna get an update and discuss the pilot Noel Park Improvement Project. We've got a budget and construction manager at risk agreement and.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. So we had been asked to give an update a few months ago, and that's what this is about. So we're just gonna go ahead and go through it. You have questions, please let us know, but there are three folks that are gonna be presenting. I'm gonna start it off. Heather, our finance director, is gonna be coming in and out. And then we've got Dunaway, the architect of record for the project, and will also have a portion of this as well. Alright, so here we go. So current park amenities, Pilot Knoll has 55 RV sites, three large pavilions for rentals, 24 picnic shelters, boat ramp and parking, walking and horse trails, sand volleyball and restroom and showers. Pilot Knoll has vendor agreements, and these are the four vendor agreements, bluet, stand-up paddle boarding, jet ski rentals, kayak kiosk and firewood. The RV occupancy for Pilot Knoll, as you can see, we trend here, I'm not gonna read through all of these, 2016 to 2024, 69% trending 81 and 76%. This is influenced also by floods, so when we have floods out there, we have to shut down certain camp of the RV sites. Over here, you can see the revenue trending also from 2016 to 2024.
It is hard to get a spot on the weekend. I've tried and I've failed usually every time.
It's pretty popular.
Okay, and this is my area. I had just displayed the core lease parks fund actual data from 2016 to 2024 with the 2025 budget. And it's just reflecting, as Phil had mentioned, the increase in the park fees. Now, this includes both Cochran's and Pilot Knoll and the New York Park Fees. And also net increase and decrease. We've been trending, you know, pretty well around 186,000 a year, I think, on average in that time period. So this is just a graphic illustration of this, where you can see the revenue is a blue line. And so it's been around 400,000 to 600,000. And the orange line represents the fund balance and how it's grown over these years. And just a reminder, the yellow line is reflective of what our target for the fund balance in 25% or three months of operations.
So a little bit more about the history. Recent records provided by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and I mean really recent because we've asked for them, we got a new lake manager to be able to find some, indicated the park was built in 1966, and the water lines and electrical systems are approximately 59 years old. As you can see on this map, or the plan sheet, is dated 1966. What we have here, just to kind of orient you, these are the campsites, and this is the day use area. So according to Denton County Septic Company, it's one of the vendors that we have out there that services our septic system. It was installed sometime between the 1970s, but the exact date is unknown, and predates the first lease in 2004. And in 2024, a new 25-year lease was executed with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. So current utility status, the current water line and septic system supporting the gatehouse, RV park, restroom, camp manager slips and dump stations are outdated, failing to enter and need to be replaced. The sewer line in the RV areas is exposed along the lakeshore and has required frequent repairs. Recent repairs indicate that the leach system is no longer working and functioning properly. And we just found that leach system because we didn't have any plans on it. We stumbled across it when talking to an employee that had been here for almost 15 to 20 years. So he was explaining that to us, and literally within two weeks, we found this system, and it had it serviced. So the current continuing, the water, the water line pipe is constructed of multiple PVC classes and has required frequent repairs throughout the, throughout the years. Both systems are at the end of their useful life and need to be replaced. The septic and the potable water systems are not replaced. It will have a negative impact both on the park revenue and the overall visitor experience. So currently, we are having to shut down services to fix water leaks, basically, is what it, is what it comes down to. And we do do that quite frequently. So talk a little bit about the master plan to bring those that were known council at the time up to speed as to what the, the project looked like. Up at the, at the park entry, there's a new gatehouse, park signage, parking vehicular and trailhead circulation upgrades up here. The site infrastructure, dump station, site septic upgrades and main water, main water line replacement. Rental cabins, this shows the footprint of Phase One of the rental cabins, which totals 16. And their campsite amenities, including tent pads, fire rings, things of that nature. And then also trail connections, which is on a, which is on another slide. There's gonna be some minor restroom upgrades and trail connections to the RV area, floors, ceiling, stuff like that, just to, you know, put lipstick on it. The boat ramp area, it's gonna be a courtesy dock relocation, lighting upgrades to get the lights when it floods out of the water, paddle support access and accessible parking, and also trail connections. You can see here, I don't know if you can see it from there, but we're adding a, you know, the goal is to add a new service dock just for the boats, and then move the existing slip that is there and add a 88 accessible boat launch to the boat ramp area. And then the day use area improvements include pavilion lighting upgrade, like LED lighting, outdoor redo of the outdoor volleyball court out there. And then providing an accessible route to the pavilions, for sure, because those generate a lot of revenue and a lot of usage. And then also a portion of the little, what do we call those? Yeah, picnic stations that are out there, and actually removing some of the ones that flood. And we've already started that with the Corps of Engineers, they've allowed us to move a couple of them. So it's getting a much-needed upgrade that it hasn't had in, you know, 60 years. And these, the dotted lines indicate the trail system that we're wanting to incorporate on the site, and this would be just a soft path trail.
Phil, can you go, sorry, can you go back to slides? I think I know the answer, but the dashed line on this one is the flood line?
Yes, it is. Yeah, so that's a great question, that's a 537. You can see all the cabins are inside of the 537, so they wouldn't flood like what happens at Grapevine, what happens at Flower Mound and other places on the lake. Great question. So this is our map of what the existing infrastructure looks like out there. It's a two-inch water line that services the whole park, that's the one that's made up of different types of PVC. We've got an existing sewer line that is 60 years old. This is the section that we found, that was in a forested area. We have a leach line, and electrical line is indicated by the red. And the green boxes are the septic, if you will, holding tanks that is out there right now. So this is a proposed estimated infrastructure, this is something that Ken spoke of last year about this time. And Heather will speak on it a little bit more, but the goal is, is to have Public Works manage this. We want to get out of the septic and water business. License and certification are the expertise. And in order to get that done, the water service, the new line is about 1.2 million, the sanitary sewer is 2.2, almost 2.2 for a total cost with 5% inflation at 3.67.
Phil, sorry, before you move on.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead perhaps, but service lines off of the eight-inch water to all of the cabins, are those included? I'm assuming you have to run water to the cabins, right? Are they gonna provide individual connections each cabin across the road, or?
Yeah, Scott's gonna provide a stub out, and then we connect to it. Is that correct?
So we're just gonna cross it once and then connect them all, or does each service line have to go under the road?
The plan is for sewer lines, we do one stub out, and if there's a bank of three, three can fit into the one stub, and then there will be a separate water service for each cabin. Not meter, just a separate water service.
So each water service?
Meter the whole park as it is now.
But each service line is gonna go under Orchard Hill Lane at this point?
Yes.
For the water?
Is that part of it, to have all the stub outs underneath the road, ready to go?
But is that in the price? Okay.
It's complete.
Alright, yeah, that was it, thank you.
And two lift stations?
Yes.
Where is it lifting to?
It's gonna lift to, right in, yeah, kind of right in there is, is one area we were looking at. And the other area is, is right there where Phil's pointing.
Lift, well, like, but where, where is it going? What line is it dumping into?
It'd be aerobic system.
Okay, that was my question, alright, okay, makes sense.
So using, you know, the, some of that data, I'm using some constant assumptions when I'm forecasting what our debt service requirement for the sewer or water upgrades. So as Phil had said, with the inflation, we are pricing the full water and sewer upgrade to be 3.6 million. Now, if we just did the water only, it would be 1.2 million. And then if we got an updated cost, opinion of probable cost, if we just did service, service or sanitary sewer service without any cabinet connections, and that's $2 million. And I'm also assuming that, assuming that we have 348,000 engineering costs. And just to, you know, for those who weren't here back when 21, when we had the feasibility study, the anticipated cost for the sewer water or septic updates was gonna be $430,000, so. Increased a little bit since then.
So before we move on, what changed then? Right, because that's a quarter of magnitude higher. So what didn't we know back when we did the original feasibility study that we now know or are assuming? Because it's almost added, added zero to the original.
Right, so one of the assumptions was is that the water line would be brought into Pilot Knoll. And that's it. So that's one. The other one, just on the septic side, the septic was much smaller, it was using the existing system and dumping into the existing dump station that is here. And we can't, we can't do that. From what I understand, in 1989, these started being regulated, so things have changed. And at the time, we didn't, we didn't know that.
Do we not just call our senator and have him give it a regulation?
Mayor?
You guys have pool, don't you?
We have contact, but I don't know about pools.
The other comparison is the whole project, the whole park. You know, the, the original feasibility study was looking at the cabins only, the, the larger project, the 3.6 is going all the way over to the, to the RV sites and all the way down to the.
So our total revenue that we make off the park? I know it was in the number, but I couldn't remember off the top of my head.
Six, six forty top, less than 200 net, as it is today. What about four cabins with the cabins? It's coming.
It's coming.
So last year, in our utility capital improvement plan, we had identified the Brooksport water line for this fiscal year. And then we also identified the Pilot Knoll water and wastewater infrastructure to be 3.8. So we had added, in our assumptions now, added a 5% inflation. So this is a pro forma for if we decide, you know, that we are going to replace the water and sewer, or do the full water and sewer upgrades without the cabins. I did make a projection, Bill is kind of working with the Parks Board to consider a $5 increase to park fees. So I included that in their assumption. And so so the amounts that are listed here as a utility fund transfer would be the full Pilot Knoll, the water and wastewater revision. And then I'm also including, you know, the park funds, the debt service for the park funds just related to Pilot Knoll Shelter, restroom and gatehouse. So you can see, like, when we've started including the debt service, we are at a $145,000.
Why aren't we considering cabins?
I was just reflecting, if we consider not doing the cabins, what that would look like for now.
Just showing the existing infrastructure replacement for water and sewer. Because of the age of it.
So for clarity, water and sewer need to be replaced regardless of anything else?
Yes.
So I mean, I'll answer your question. I'd asked, because this came out last year, when it was, we were, no one had seen this big number before Ken left. This was last June or July, if you all remember. And we're talking about a utility fund investment, and it's like, where did that come from? And so what's evolved is water's failing, sewer's failing. So do nothing before cabins brought into the picture, these upgrades are required to keep the park running.
Right, so what my, my thought would be is, the cabins, again, you're not having to upsize, it's not gonna cause otters, so the only difference you're looking at is 32 additional services. I mean, let's, you're not going to need to upsize your lines for the cabins. So there shouldn't be a huge cost difference between no cabins and cabins when you're just talking services, correct?
Water service, water service is gonna provide a six-inch line for fire protection. Without cabins, we can go with a two-inch line only. If you do sewer upgrades or sewer replacement with cabins, it's a 23-foot deep sewer main. If you don't do cabins, it can be three to eight feet.
Okay, that's, that's large.
That's your.
Okay.
Construction difference.
So all the cabins are gonna be sprinkled?
I'm sorry?
All the cabins will be sprinkled? You said fire protections, I didn't know if it was sprinkled.
Fire hydrants.
Yeah.
Okay.
Phil, sorry, before we move on, any of this infrastructure, is it gonna affect any of the current services? Or can construction happen and there's no disruption?
We have to.
We work with Phil, basically, we're in a preliminary stage of talking about that, but right now, it's looking like, yeah, we would close half the park while we worked on to the other half, and then flip.
So are those loss of revenues assumptions built into these models?
No, because what we're trying to do is, we gotta work with Scott on this and timing, is that the RV area, that's our biggest revenue generator, is taken care of first, and that would be taken care of right after Christmas if the timing is right, January and February, where revenues are at their lowest. So it won't, it will have an impact. I don't have that percentage with me, but it's, I would say it's less than 10%. And that's assuming we're gonna have great weather.
And it's two months is really optimistic.
Yeah. Well.
That was the next question.
Yeah, I'm just putting stuff out there. We're, basically, what we're doing is doing it in the, in the least busiest time of the year.
So all these numbers are assuming a best-case scenario?
Yes.
No delays, a two-month turnaround on infrastructure improvements, and no loss of revenue?
Well, for the RV, the two months, just, hopefully, just addressing the, the RV area first, not the rest of the park, two to three months.
You know, the total construction time period, what were you estimating?
Big job, it's gonna be at least a year.
Really? Throw down those utilities in the subdivision and get it done in under six months?
So then back to my original question, what revenue are we gonna lose during this year-long construction, and is it in these numbers?
It's not.
So these are fantastical numbers, right? We're assuming revenue that we likely are not going to earn for the duration of the construction, so why are we not assuming that loss of revenue in this?
That's a good question.
Right, because all those numbers at the ending fund balance aren't really accurate. We're not, if we're just assuming we're gonna make money when it's closed, right? That's, so it may not make a big difference, but it's, we at least need to consider when we're not making money, we're saying we're making.
Yeah, it is, I agree with you 100%, and we're, you know, we haven't thought that far.
It takes a year to build, and I can throw down 200 lots in a subdivision and nine months have utilities and roads in. I'm just wondering, that just seems like a long time.
Let's get that contractor to bid on it, then.
Yeah, I'm gonna bid on it. This is a, this is a rehab, it's not new construction.
Well, well, why, why would we rehab, aren't we gonna put all new stuff in?
Still can tear up what's there.
Well, no.
Needs to be, remain in service.
Yeah.
We need to keep it in service as long as possible.
So essentially, you would project?
It's not an open dig situation. It's not an open dig situation, it's a, it's a be careful, it's a rehab.
Back to Robert's point, you would, you would essentially project the same, the same number that we had last year whenever the flooding happened and shut us down, which would go back to your, I wouldn't even assume ten percent, maybe fifteen. You'd have to, you'd have to double it, you'd have to do ten percent for the construction and possibly another five percent, assuming bad weather.
And I, you know, this, this is Scott's lane, but I tell you, my limited experience, I've seen lines run parallel where you can. I don't, and because we don't have plans, that's an unfair assumption. So we, we might have to do some pothole investigating and just kind of have an understanding of where things are. And see if, if that is an option to run parallel lines. But like I said, I'm getting into his world and he doesn't like me there. So we're, we're going to work together to try to have the least amount of impact on the revenue that we, that we can, like we did with the asphalt project. Is there any other questions?
Yeah.
This is the same, except we are just assuming that we're going to update the, the water line. And just maintain the existing septic system with repairs. So with that scenario, you know, we're, we're lost that. You know, about twenty, twenty thousand a year certainly.
So recent upgrades to pilot and all and vendor agreements, we had new asphalt road through the RV area, totally hundred eighty four thousand and more is planned. This is us working with Scott again, his lane, asking him to do the engineering and manage the project and they had. And we, and we're going to continue to do that over the next several years. So we have, you know, some improvements also on the roads that are badly needed. Replenishment of gap gravel for the RV slips in the road, both Scott, contractor has done this and we've also done this. And then major tree lifting work to accommodate the larger RVs. And I don't know if any of you are RVers, but they have gotten extremely big, tremendously large.
They're taller, which there is a request to limb up the trees on Allen Village Road and Briar Hill and all for some RVers, just FYI.
And then the park now is cashless. The other thing that we did that is not on here, that if any of you sat in Sunny's budget meeting, she spoke about the integration that we had between ActiveNet and Ventec. And that's our recreation software and our pay station that is out there. And what that does, that allows us not to hire full time folks, but part time staff and have limited staff out there. So we're able to save money in the pay station. Takes up, you know, a, a good portion of the heavy lifting. And we've been able to close the loop on lost revenue quite a bit and recapturing revenue. And we're able to do things like currently, when we rent a pavilion now, we can put a capacity on how many cars are allowed in the pavilion. Based off of what the fire chief has, or fire marshal has designated for occupancy loads, those pavilions. So we, in some instances, we've had folks that haven't been very honest about how many people show up. And we, we've had a group of close to three thousand people in the day use area, which has caused havoc for police and for fire, being able to get back there and do services. So we've been able to greatly decrease that and then also sell additional parking spaces based off of what's available. And we've captured revenue through that as well. So it's, it's been a, been a really good system, not only for pilot and all, but also for parks. And the cashless system, we're moving, you'll see a supplemental request, we're wanting to take a next step and have tap, Apple Pay and things like that. So now we're going to bring Brad up.
Phil, being mayor and council, great to be back again. Kind of, you know, you've seen several of these slides and some of these updates, but just wanted to bring you through. Kind of a timeline, like where have we been? You know, we, most of us were, were, were here back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, when the cabin project feasibility study was done. As Phil mentioned, you know, some early cost estimations, really what we like to call that, you know, the art of possibility, you know? What was this project something worth, you know, exploring moving forward? Here we are, five years later, still talking about, I think we proved a point that it was something that was, you know, desired. You know, we are looking at, at a, at an option for some really great improvements to the park. So through that phase, you know, there was a, a December twenty twenty one bond issue for some improvements. Then in twenty twenty two, scoping discussions with, you know, for, for full, full design. Also, the first attempt at a Texas Parks and Wildlife local park grant was, was done. That grant was not successful, but later on in twenty twenty three, it was awarded. So there was also a, a trails grant at that time. And then we also had meetings with USAs, the Corps of Engineers, basically approving in concept this project. So moving forward, you know, that also happened through the, through the feasibility study. But actual concept drawings were shown to the, to the Corps in twenty twenty two. Moving forward into twenty twenty three, the Rangers won the World Series, but also in January, the Texas Parks and Wildlife grant was the first round. The trail grant was not awarded and then the local park grant was not awarded. But later on, they changed up their submission requirements, so then they redid it in August. And so our second attempt was awarded. The, the official award came in early twenty twenty four. At the time, they also were offering a boat ramp grant separate from the local park grant. And so that was awarded in early twenty twenty four also, but applied for in twenty twenty three.
How much was that? How much do we get for the boat ramp?
Boat ramp was a design, it, it totals about four hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, so the design is, is an eighty twenty and we're, we've spent what sixty? So we'll get eighty percent of that back, but what, what it does is it, they can't tell you this, but they do tell you it, that it guarantees you the construction grant piece of it.
Oh, no, how many, how many dollars do we get?
It, it'll total over a half a million dollars for the project.
Yes.
Eighty them, twenty us?
Yes, yes, well, that, excuse me, yes, that is correct. Because I get my local park grant also confused with the, with the ratios, but yes, it's eighty twenty.
So in twenty twenty three, again, Dunaway was, was engaged for professional design services. Phase one design of the gatehouse and entry experience was initiated. We knew the cabins was coming along, like that was concepted for the grant, grant submissions. But phase one was anticipated to be the first, first piece of implementation. In, in that time, again, a considerable coordination with, with the Corps of Engineers, approving in concept, the trails, the cabins. And then the, working with the Texas Historical Commission, they also approved the, the submission of these in concept.
What was the historical commission? Oh, you had to do a, a dig.
It was based on elements through the grant as well. The grant has some funding.
She saw this, she knows.
Yeah, no, I've been on a couple of those and, and the maps around here are up to date, so like, yeah, we don't know, so go start digging holes.
Well, and, and there are some great historic Coke bottles and beer cans all set.
We kept looking for fire cracked rock, never found it.
No, we found a lot of Dr. Pepper cans, pull taps, pull tabs and everything, but.
Did you make rings?
They, there, there's a great report if you ever want to see it, they, they did a great job. Again, twenty twenty four, just last year, ongoing design phase of phase one, the boat ramp design grant was awarded. There was a, an element to that grant that it, that required federal funding. And so within that, just contractually, we had to do some items that was re-scoped. And then worked into a separate contract for design. In October, bid phase one, gatehouse entry was let for bid, those drawings were done a hundred percent. We received one bid from contracting contractors in the area. Really kind of a tough time to, to receive bids, there's so much work going on right now, we're seeing that a lot in the industry right now. The, the bid was rejected, one, a couple of reasons, one, it was a little, it was higher than the anticipated budget, but also receiving one, there is no comparison.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You said there were federal funds, generally with federal funds, there's federal requirements, were there were federal requirements in the bid?
That one was not bid, that was the boat ramp grant, was the federal funds. The bid was the gatehouse and entry.
Gatehouse, there was no federal.
No, sir.
Budgetary contractual.
No grants applied to the gatehouse at all, it was.
What were the strings on the, that you had to rework from the feds?
And the scoring criteria, they changed it.
What did we have to rescore, like what did we have to do?
They, they emphasized less on cabin structure and more on recreation.
So in this room, we, we made a presentation on destination marketing and branding for the cabins, for the logos. Again, that's going to be rolled into the, to the next phases of the project, but we have direction from council and park board on that. Again, the archaeological report was completed, approved and it's good for two years. Two thousand twenty five, bringing us up to, to today, phase two design was, was initiated, cabins, day use and trails. In March, the boat ramp design was submitted to the, to Corps of Engineers. That's gone through several levels of approval, they have to go all the way through real estate, different elements and so.
I got approval this week.
That was a great answer.
Nice job.
That's, that's in concept until the final plans are done.
Ongoing coordination with Public Works on the utility project, again, those questions on where the tie-ins. You know, there, there are two projects here that we're talking about, there's the Public Works and then the Parks Department. And, and there is a fine line, you know, a known line of demarcation where we tie into the, to the upgraded utilities. And then, you know, sewer and water services that go to the cabins are in these plans. Within discussions on project delivery, again, kind of the temperature and the industry standard today. You know, over the years, we've been constantly bidding projects in the design bid, build, bid, build phase, really an industry standard. You know, in the last three years, you know, the different delivery methods have become much more popular. One, design build, but also the C Mar project delivery process, that's the construction manager at risk. Where a, a construction manager or a contractor is hired, you know, midstream, sometimes beginning, at, at the beginning of a project. And in that way, we can work with the contractor during the design phase. And I have some more slides that'll kind of overview that, but we'll kind of talk about that in a little bit. But that delivery method was presented to the city, one, to collect all phases of the project. We, you know, we had to reject phase one, we're bringing that back into looking at, you know, designing a C Mar delivery process. Hiring a contractor for that and then we can still phase the approach, you know, within the delivery. But we'll go over that here in a little bit. There is a, you know, actually here in the, in the room tonight, we had an RFP a couple of months ago that went out for, looking for a C Mar. Dean Construction came out, you know, rated at the top through a process that the city initiated. And so there are representatives here from Dean Construction that could answer questions if we get to that point, but we can talk about that soon. So project cost estimates, this again, leading to the C Mar delivery, delivery phase. Again, there is an early cabin feasibility study, again, the art of possibility, what could happen here? You know, these, these prices and costs were done in twenty twenty, a kind of a, an interesting time in our industry. But, you know, something that put out an idea for this project. Moving forward into twenty twenty three, the Texas Parks and Wildlife grant request, these, some of these costs were based on, on early concept drawings and, and early phases. But looking at what that possibility for funding is, so that identified the three point five million dollar, you know, ask. Yes, ma'am.
Why is most of your bid items lump sum? Like your septic upgrades, wouldn't it be broken down and I mean, why is it all lump sum?
Just as a, as a, at a concept level, there weren't drawings to base linear footage or, or elements on. So while we may have had a, an, an item, you know, in there, there, there are a few that are each. Yeah, but, but again, concept level. So moving to, to today, you know, at sixty percent drawings, you know, we have, you know, this, this opportunity to engage with a, a contractor. To really take the drawings as they are today and work to the, the build to budget and, and understand what are the program items within this drawing set? One, are there construction techniques or ideas or thoughts that we could change in the drawings? Or is there something, you know, different, you know, cost effective in terms of, you know, the delivery of the project? So before we move any further with design, the idea is to entertain the, the, you know, engaging with the C Mar. To bring on a, a construction manager to, to deliver a project. And I'll come back, I have a few more slides.
Okay, so this slide represents on the left side, what our CIP was for the twenty twenty one bond issue related to pilot and all specifically. We had in there a, the pilot and all cabins that started at two thousand three hundred or, I'm sorry, two million three hundred thousand. And then it was revised last year after we did the, the grant application to be two million six hundred and forty four thousand. And then we also added the professional services. And. And then this year, we're adding in the CMAR. You know, as a potential and ask for today and on today's council meeting is an agenda. And then on this right side, this details the components of this two million six hundred and forty four thousand for the pilot and all cabins.
Does that include the ramp as well?
It does, it's on my next, next slide.
I think Robert has a question.
How big are the cabins in square feet?
Four hundred, four, four hundred to five hundred in between, small, tiny.
So we're estimating each cabin's around eighty five thousand, I'm doing math in my head, but is that?
Or sixteen, I think it's sixty two, then sixty.
Sixty, that's why I don't do math out loud, but is that, is that realistic?
I hope so, but to be quite honest, we won't know until, till we get through the process. And I will, will tell you that when we were thinking about this process, this conversation with, with Councilman Kixmiller, also Scott. Especially after the gatehouse, you know, came back and we only received one bid. And they had recommended, especially Councilman Kixmiller, that I, I meet with a local home builder. And just kind of sit down with him and see, you know, is there any savings, is there any possibility for that to happen? And this was specifically to deal with the gatehouse, you know, it's, it's roughly the same size as the same, you know, if you will, build.
Design.
Yeah, that's basic design, same materials, things like that. And very, you know, they, they did provide some, some saving opportunities, but the other thing was, is would you bid on something? And then knowing that sixteen cabins are coming, because at this point, you know, we also didn't receive bids for a one point two million dollar project with Unity Park and other things. So we're, we're starting to see a trend is what I'm saying on, on this side, at least on the Parks and Rec side. So, you know, just really asking some questions, well, we put it out to bid, excuse me, I, I, I kind of got ahead of myself. But we did that before we put it out to bid and we let the home builders know, the two that I interviewed or talked to about it, that it's out to bid. And they said they would bid on it. And they said they would bid on it, but they didn't bid on it. So we're 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 thinking that the project is not big enough, so that led us into further discussions with, okay, what are we gonna do? We 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 need to pivot because we're we're on a timeline. You know, thi- this project has to be built, at least the grant item pieces of it, by April of twenty twenty-eight. And so understanding that, and we're having these delays because of what's going on in the market, at least with our projects. Um, so that's where the CMAR uh came in uh to play here. So.
I appreciate that, but I did the math on my calculator, I apologize. So that comes out to about a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot on sixteen cabins for a million dollars. I'm not a home builder, I don't know if a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot is enough, right? So I would rather us be cautious and conservative, small C conservative in this case, to uh, let's not say it's a million, I I'd really press somebody to give us a better per footage cost. I I'm just throwing it out there, maybe a hundred and fifty is great, and that's a hell of a deal, I think, but.
And that's.
Sounds low to me, but I don't know any better.
Yeah, and that's part of the CMAR process.
Especially for the renderings that we saw on these cabins, they're not, they're not a C box out there.
You're just a structure, you've got, you've got to add on everything else. Well, your total package is two point six, though, for the sixteen cabins.
Well, that's just side weighted costs and all that other stuff. I'm just.
You still have to have that, no matter what you do.
No, I I agree, I'm just pure cabin structure, just a million dollars for sixteen, seems low to me.
And you look at the two point six with sixteen, that's even that much more. That's an expensive five hundred square feet.
So I guess my main concern overall is that all these numbers that we're seeing are optimistic, right? And I'm trying to, in my mind, trend away from the optimistic scenario and something that's a bit of a little bit more pessimistic so that we're not surprised.
Sure.
Later on.
Appreciate that.
Um, I mean, I have a year left, so it's everybody else that's going to be surprised when this comes.
We're doing it originally along with Charlotte, so the three of us are here.
I I mean, if we're gonna keep talking about numbers, I think we need to be more rigorous in the numbers that we're showing, right? And so I'll leave it at that.
Well, that's why we brought Dean Construction here, uh, to be honest with you, and and we'll, they, we'll get to that here in a minute, but yes.
Almost thirty percent of our cost is soft cost, and fifteen percent being the C Mar. That's a lot, and soft. Thirty percent of the overall budget. That's my concern. My concern is, is that we're heavy on soft cost. And um, I'm not sure, I guess Dean can tell us more about the C Mar process and all, but normally that is not the number you end up with when you're done with C Mar. That's fifteen percent of the budget. So the budget's not based on, it's based, I know they're at risk and all, but it's based on the overall price. So if the price comes in at whatever, it it it's almost exactly fifteen percent. So is it, is it, whatever it comes in, is it fifteen percent?
Yeah, and I think what.
And it also includes the boat grant for this C Mar contract?
It does.
I mean, th- that number and that number is the same, right? Yeah.
But the CMAR also includes.
Okay, if you take fifteen percent of, oh, it's six hundred, so that's what, seventy, one twenty? I get that, I just, you're adding in one more layer of of management, per se, over something. And so is it worth that fifteen percent?
Well, that's, that's part of the discussion. When we get into the C Mar, C and C Mar, part of that, those questions are relevant to that. But we can bring the slide back up.
Yeah.
But if we get through all of this, we'll come back and we'll have Brad and Dean Construction talk about that. Because I know, I know these, these fees right here are for design.
Oh, yeah. Those fees right there are still usually sometimes based on price, but your C Mar is usually always based on price.
Right.
So if we get hit by more, say, say it's four hundred, then that's more, so.
There's a guaranteed maximum price that they have to provide for the project.
Which is?
That is to be determined, and there's a cap. And, you know, we 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 have a budget cap on that, and um, so that's important. And, you know, they provided a proposal, said that they could bring it in at that dollar amount.
And if we didn't have them, what 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 do we get? What what does, who, is that you guys have to do it? I mean, I'm trying to figure out.
Well, hold on.
You don't do C Mar. You normally pick a G C or whatever, so what?
What's the risk of not having C Mar?
Right.
It's 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 the risk that we've experienced over three projects and getting either one bid or no bids. And and that's the reality of it. For for this type of project, I get.
If I just jump in, I think from my perspective, the other real risk is that we're, we come in with rose colored glasses and we're estimating our, you know, our opinion or probable cost too low, whereas the C Mar can, part of their job is to give us accurate field costs, or what it would cost them to do that. So we're paying a little bit more so that we don't get bit later when bids come in a million dollars over. So I can see the C Mar point of this easier than I can us lowballing our construction costs and we're not updating it between twenty-four and twenty-five, so. So there is value in a C Mar, from my standpoint, just to protect that.
Yeah, and that and that's the other thing. Yes, exactly, no overages. So we get through the rest of these slides and we'll come back and we have three slides on the C Mar process that we can visit, kind of break open and have Dean Construction add to it.
Um, so this slide um illustrates how we're funding this project. Um, so as we have mentioned, there's some granting opportunities, so that is on this column. And then um, we're gonna have the bonds that are earmarked for this project. And then um, we were planning on, you know, as we have our bond proceeds and they're unspent, they're sitting in an investment account. And so currently, we have um about four hundred thousand in interest that we've earned. So we were thinking we could just allocate, um, to pay for the C Mar used on this bond, um, the interest on the bond proceeds. Um, I also wanted to illustrate how much we spent and committed um as of date. So really, it's just the um, you know, design fees related to Pilot No and the boat grant. And so this is um kind of where we're going into some different um feasibility analysis um based upon our, you know, um, expected, well, having sixteen cabins and expecting a seventy-five percent occupancy. We've done a few different scenarios that we'll go through real fast. But um, with the seven, sixteen cabins and um seventy-five percent occupancy, we're seeing about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue. And um, at the bottom is our, our expenses. So we will need to hire a full-time camp manager and then two um part-time um staff at a thousand hours each. And then the other uh operating expenses are kind of detailed here. We were planning to use a linen service and a cleaning service. And then we'll have to kind of equip the cabins with some amenities to begin with. And then um, just regular supplies and maintenance. And then there's been discussion to add um it, the Wi-Fi infrastructure, to provide monthly Wi-Fi services to the cabins. And then uh, just the water, monthly water and utility bills.
And would we, how fast would we recoup all of that with rentals?
Um.
She's got a slide. Is that revenue nine forty one? Four oh two is the camp manager PT and other. Over here, other is three forty-six. On there, it's two sixty-seven.
Yeah, um, so.
Seventy thousand difference.
Yeah, we take out the Wi-Fi, that's infrastructure is a one-time thing, so that we'll be on the first year.
It's still in here, but it's not over here.
Right.
Is that seventy-five percent occupancy? Is that for all fifty-two weeks out of the year?
Yes. Yeah, um, and we were just, when we use seventy-five, that's the um rate that we see with the RV camp sites. So that's kind of where, how we started with seventy-five percent.
What's Flower Mounds for occupancy rate?
It ranges.
So shouldn't we look at something, I mean, RV and a cabin, too, apples and oranges?
We did, she's got other slides here. Yeah, but it's, you know, the the, we looked at grapevine, we looked at Flower Mountain there. You know, both of them are anywhere between fifty and a hundred percent, depending on what their, the season, the time of year that it is.
Right.
So it's, you know, it's it's variable. And then also what the offerings are, so it, you know, I don't have a, um, I didn't, they weren't able to provide me like an annual, what is your occupancy? They take, they gave me a target.
I just think that's high.
Yeah, so between fifty and a hundred percent. And 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 we go into other scenarios at the percentage.
But just, point of reference, and I think when Ken first went through this scenario five years ago, goal in what was shown is almost a half million dollars down in the bottom. Okay, because one goal was looking for revenue opportunities for the city. Okay, because we're obviously building out.
Yes.
Okay, so still using the old cost assumptions, occupancy assumptions. We've gone from a half a million dollar to one twenty-two. That's what we see.
Yes.
That's primarily because of um the debt service related to the.
All of the infrastructure that was not foreseen.
Right.
In twenty twenty-one.
So then we place this into our, the core lease fund, part-time fund, um, just to see how it impact the core lease fund in total. So we're just going in the revenue and the um cabin expenditures and also, you know, the debt service related to part bond, bond to, you know, pay the debt service on the CO that we issued. And then um, the sewer and wastewater infrastructure as well. So in this scenario, we are seeing like around an eighteen-year uh recovery.
And by then, we'd have to redo everything, so start over.
This is based on seventy-five percent occupancy.
Right, which, I find that a little high.
Well, we have other scenarios in here.
Um, so then we looked at it as sixty-four percent um occupancy. And so then, you know, obviously, our revenue decreased to three hundred and ten. Um, and then our operating also decreased because some of them are um dependent on, you know, the occupancy, like the linen service and the cleaning service. Um, and so we start seeing, you know, the sixty-four, like the first year with the heavy like the infrastructure, we're seeing a fifty-five thousand dollar, thousand-dollar deficit, and then about thirty, thirty-five thousand.
Did you also plug in rate increases as the years go on as well?
I did for the long term. I was looking at considering rate increases every five years, and we may do it sooner than that. Bill was talking about maybe every other year, year or so. I did in my form, uh, for the long-term projections, looked at increasing.
And I typically look every two years. So, you know, at everything within the, that is offered in the park department. The comparison with our benchmark cities and the cities around us. And we also factor in, you know, is it apples to apples, things like that. Feel like we're, we've been pretty accurate thus far, except for maybe may have to adjust our annual pass for seniors that are outside of the city.
Now, the utility improvements have to be done regardless, correct? It's just the level of utility improvements, whether we have that.
Ninety-two inch versus the eight inch, so.
Pointing to Scott. I understand, because we're we're including a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar debt service on something that's gonna have to be done anyway, right? If we're looking at the true value of the cabins, doesn't it make sense to have that in?
But do they really have to be done?
But.
Vanessa's. That's a separate dec- decision. If we weren't having this discussion around cabins, we'd probably have a discussion coming in with, we've now found we have to re-update utilities, replace the water lines. Completely different decision scenario, to say, when do we do it? How do we do it? What's the risk if we do or don't? Weigh it against our lease contract? I mean, that's a, you know, so yes, it should be, but it's not mandatory.
But the utility.
I get where you're going, incremental cost.
With the utilities, if we're going from five foot deep to twenty-three deep, it's a whole nother level of cost. So there's a have-to, we need to dress it, and then twenty-three feet below. And I'm still stuck on this fifteen percent C Mar when typically it's between three and, uh, five and ten. So I don't know why we have a premium, yeah, why are we having a premium when the industry standard is five to ten?
I don't know that that's the correct, the, through our C Mar process, that in, we can talk to Dean, but um, the percentage based on the the approved budget or the budget that was in the RFQ. Um, do you recall what that was in the?
Um, well, we actually give just percentage base, right?
Yeah.
It's based on just a percentage of the cost. So normally, and and just to back up.
Yeah.
Kind of, hello, my name's Toby, by the way.
Toby, why don't you come up to the.
Yeah, yeah. If you want me to just jump up a little bit. We we, um, my name's Toby with Dean Construction, and all we really do are parks. Just so you understand, that's all we do, is parks. Um, we work, we do bid and we do C Mar, but we mainly do C Mar. We've been around since nineteen eighty-four, but we got into doing parks and doing C Mars in the early nineties. And that's all we do. Um, what we do and kind of where our business really works, why we've developed relationships with cities, is we come in on the early stages, as you discussed, and start to do a couple different things. And what we really add to the process is we start to value engineer before all the designs are set. On a bid process, we have to just come in, bid what's in the package and and go from there. So we're able to help with value engineering, and that is coming up with ideas, things we've seen over the years that really do help to cut costs, really do help to keep costs down, find ways to do it cheaper and better, or maybe have a better outcome long term. So we bring that to the table. The other thing we're able to do is we start off with looking at the plans early on and really understand what the grading's gonna look like. One of the things that we do really well compared to a lot of C Mars that do just buildings is they have spreadsheets and and balances and understand the costs of buildings really, really well. But they don't do grading of large parks, what it takes to get the water to move where you need it, where you have to keep, and how to do all of the things that parks really are kind of unique for. So that's why we specialize in it, that's why we really enjoy just doing parks. We do buildings, of course, and we do all of the, you know, all the build outs and all of this. For this, um, what I do see as after we go into the value engineering phase, we come up with the process. Um, then what we do is we work with vendors, and we have a lot of special vendors. I say special vendors, we have a lot of vendors that like to work with us. They've worked with us for a long time, they know us, they trust us, we have a good relationship. So when we go to bid this out, we we get competitive bids for all of the different trade services. And then we develop that into what we call the C Mar, the construction manager at risk. And that risk part is a different aspect. That's where we then give you the price, you know what the price is. What we find is that when we've been developing the bid from the beginning, brought in as the C Mar, like in this process, our bids come in really close to what we, what we expected them to and what you expected them to, because we were able to develop those prices all the way along. We were talking to contractors we work with a lot. We were talking to contractors we work with a lot and we knew, they knew what the plans were going to look like. They knew what assumptions to expect and they knew what they were going to get. So then they knew what they were going to bid and the prices come in really consistent. We're able to really manage that process from the beginning. And then we come in with the C Mar price. Now, that as risk price does a couple of things. One thing it does for you, and I know benefits I've seen a lot, is if there's a problem that's not something that normally would be like for your problem, a contractor makes a problem or there's a problem with a subcontractor, we take that risk. And we at times have had to self-perform or had to work with our network of knowing contractors to get a job done that would have been a failure. It would have been a bond issue, it would have been a problem, could have drug out for a long time. We don't let that happen because that's our risk, you understand? And we've never had a problem finishing a job or doing a job. We always have done it on time in budget. So we know what we're getting into before we give you that price. So that's kind of where, and the cost, we bid that out, it's competitive for a fee and a percentage basis. And so that's what that cost is built on. If you're looking at numbers for that cost right now, the numbers really aren't built because we haven't given you the price. That's just based on percentages.
Right. And I am thank you for the explanation. I am totally, I do C Mar. I mean, I know, I'm very familiar with C Mar, municipal C Mar, all that C Mar. I just, a fifty percent boutique price above industry standard. I'm just, what are we getting?
And I guess I want to clarify that fifteen percent isn't, that, that's the total, that's the, there's the percentage price and then the services price. And so I guess the way it's presented in here, I guess what you're seeing is the fifteen percent. So your industry standard, what was the percentage? I don't have it in front of me. I, I, we don't have that copied.
Five to ten typically.
I was just going to say, we typically are at, um,
Toby, our, our, our standard percentage ranges between nine and eleven percent.
Okay, that's right there.
And nine and eleven is where we are typically.
Yeah, and we see everything up to fifteen percent. Um, it varies about there, but ours is nine, nine to eleven. And on this contract, I'd have to see the numbers, but I think we're right in that, in that range.
I, I, I would like to add a little to the conversation too, if that's okay. My name's Kirsten George. Um, I'm also with Dean Construction. You know, while I, I've appreciated listening to everybody's conversation and questions, they're, they're really good questions. And I, and I had a little to add to it because I thought maybe it would help address some of them. Um, as far as stepping in at the sixty percent on the plans, um, where we're at now is we can step into this project and, and start working like Toby said, through a network of vendors to get you, um, a budget along the way, right? So we can do a sixty percent budget and we can do it again at seventy-five percent. And then at a hundred percent or ninety-five percent, we would put the jot off the bid, right? And so the, the purpose of doing that along the way is so that you guys are looking at the most accurate numbers, you know what I mean? Because right now, this is all, these are conceptual numbers that they, that everyone's been working with. And so what we would bring to the table here is, is a, a more closely narrowed down dollar value to everyone to actually look at these numbers and, and put them, put them in and, and run them again, you know? So, um, I, I just, I just wanted to point that out that as, as far as taking a C Mar on at this point in your project, there is a great deal of value simply for that alone, is being able to see what those numbers truly look like.
So what is your role as the engineer? Because typically at thirty, sixty, ninety, that's what you, the engineer does with the OPC. So how does, how does this work?
Well, I want the construction manager doing the OPC.
No, I get that. That's what I, well, I, that's what I'm saying. Are we double dipping is what, that's what I'm getting at is typically the engineer does it, but if you're shifting over there, wouldn't that just be a cost savings for us?
So, right, the, the project wasn't, this was a, a, a change in direction about, you know, early this year when we didn't receive any bids in the, in the first phase. So, um, we have, uh, worked with, with parks and with the, uh, you know, on, on how that could reflect into cost savings just by hiring this C Mar.
Yeah, I just, I just, almost thirty percent soft cost is a lot for, I mean, that's, that's why I'm asking a lot of questions. I just typically it's around twenty.
As far as the, uh, the delivery to, of, um, like you guys mentioned, you got one bid on the gatehouse earlier. Um, I, I did want to also just put this information out there for you. I wrapped a bid a week and a half ago. We had seventy-seven hundred invitations to bid sent out, um, and over three hundred plan holders on that project. So, um, you know, we also have an extensive network of places that we will put your project out to bid, uh, between newspapers and online, uh, virtual plan rooms and things like that. So I expect a far greater, you know, level of participation than a C Mar.
And since we're talking about this, it's probably good to talk about the, the pre-construction phase being, and the fact that it's zero cost.
Yeah, we actually don't, we, we oftentimes don't put any cost in the pre-construction. Um, and that's just for us bidding out. We kind of know where our costs line up. We want to be low and we want to stay low, and we do. And, but we also want to let you know that we get going and start on the plans. We're not charging and invoicing as we're doing that. So you're not getting invoices before the project starts. You're not paying out money for fees along the way with us. We're getting to work, we're getting to understand the plans, we're getting to value engineer it, we're getting to work and do everything. And then we get paid when the job goes, as it goes. And that works for us well. It, some people put a little bit in the front, you know, because it takes time and different projects are different. But with this one, we didn't put any fees in and I believe our, um,
I think that would speak a little to, um, about the double, right?
I mean, I'm not accusing you, but I'm just saying that typically the engineer's role, I've, I've been in those shoes, they keep doing this. And but when you shift it to someone else, usually the, the bill goes somewhere else. That's my point. And again, I'm looking at, as this is a lot of money for this park, which obviously we need water and sewer, but it also is coming out of the utility fund that our residents are also depending on. That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, yeah. We, we understand. We do understand. Uh, you know, we just want to be able to, you know, help. You understand any questions that we can, you know, that we can help with too, you know? So, um, we, we've worked with Dunaway in the past. We're working with Dunaway on a couple of projects now. And so, you know, this is pretty typical for how we work together. Um, as Toby was saying, we don't, we do not charge pre-construction fees. Um, some jobs force us to, like when you, when they put the C Mar out, they'll say it has to be a minimum of a, of a thousand. And then we do the minimum, right? But, but we don't charge. And so at the pre-construction phase now, the sixty percent, seventy-five percent budgeting that we would be doing for you guys, no one's getting charged. And so we're working just hand in hand with Dunaway as we've done so many times in the past to try to get you the most accurate budget that we can. Um, and so, I mean, I guess, I guess maybe a good way to look at that would be that, um, while yes, they, they do that as well, we're just, we're just kind of, you know, stepping in to help out, get it nailed down as accurate as possible, you know? And not, and of course, like I said, not charging any, any fee for doing that.
Do you have, uh, if, if you're done there, I did find the occupancy rates that you asked for and, and Grapevine is a hundred percent in the summer and fifty percent in the winter. And Twin Coles, which is in Flower Mound, is looking at the most recent thirty, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four is thirty-three point four percent. But we don't know the lake influences. If they had flooding, they, those cabins are in.
Yeah, that was major. Yeah, so, you know, and, and so anyway, that's the most current.
So then I'm pulling in the occupancy, the sixty-four percent occupancy, right? And see how that affects our, um, you know, um, increase in imbalance. Um, so we're just again assuming the same things on the, the previous slide, the revenue and those expenditures and the service related to the water, wastewater upgrades and and then we look at fifty percent occupancy. See how that affects our, our bottom line. As you can see, you know, when you're just looking at the cabins themselves, we're in the negative by a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, if you do the projections on Grapevine, you got the fifty and the hundred percent. You're at an occupancy rate at about sixty-seven percent. Three months of the summer, a hundred percent, twenty-five percent of the year, fifty percent of the other part. So that's about a sixty-seven percent.
So then, um, we'll put, um, the fifty percent occupancy into the total core lease fund bonds and, um, lost from initial year and then about thirty thousand dollars came after.
They kind of went through the process, but if, you know, I'm going to let Brad just kind of run through it himself. Some summary slides just to, you know, crash course in C Mar if you have it already, but, um, and, and feel free to, Toby, if you want to fill in, but what, you know, collaborative delivery method, we kind of heard that from, from Dean in terms of looking at the plans before it, before it is bid so that we can adjust the design, uh, providing the guaranteed maximum price for the project. You know, the key elements is, is early involvement. Obviously, uh, you know, we have, we have gone, you know, all the way up to sixty percent because that was the initial, uh, delivery method anticipated. Uh, bringing in a C Mar at that point, one, there's something to look at now. And, and so that's, that's kind of the, the, the benefit of where we're at right now. Um, input on cost, schedule and constructability. Again, your thought on, on price per square foot. Um, you know, we have a design, you know, there's an architect that worked on each cabin. You know, are there elements of that working with the contractor that we can change or, or update? You know, some of it may even be an increase. Uh, you know, it's a, a better change to the, to the design. The C Mar provides that GMP, uh, you know, after the significant design development, then that, that maximum cost, uh, the owner will play, will pay, you know, except for approved changes. You know, what is that risk management? The, as, as Toby mentioned, you know, the, the CM assumes the responsibility for cost, schedule and quality. So they are working with, uh, uh, changes with contractors or subcontractors and elements of, of that nature. You know, the owner retains some oversight, but the CM mitigates that risk and overruns and delays. You know, the financial incentives, we could probably talk a little bit about that of if there is a cost savings. A, a, as opposed to a designed bid build, when that overhead is mixed into each, you know, trade or each bid. Uh, you know, if there is something that is either, either brought out of the project or changed in the middle of the project, we know, you know, that early bid was, was truly that construction cost, you know, that then, you know, rolls off of the project and cost savings are, are related to the owner. Um, so that's, uh, you know, any cost savings under the GMP are shared between the owner, um, you know, and the CM that does not have to then pay that, that's uh, collaboration transparency. Of course, uh, you know, close cooperation between the CM, the owner and the design team. Um, transparent decision-making and problem-solving, ongoing updates. Um, really just, you know, it, it, it seems like what we've seen at industry standard now, uh, that the projects that we've been delivering in this method come, come to success, successful completion quicker and, and easier, you know, that it is because of that communication throughout the whole process. You know, as we're looking at, again, that, the, the appetite for this project, when we first bid that out as just the entry experience, um, we, we did not get as much, uh, interest when it was just the entry experience. When we were able to, uh, lump it into the C Mar project, um, you know, that would be in, inclusive of the entire project, but maybe there are phased improvements, you know, at, you know, through this process, we could identify, uh, you know, phases of this that could start, uh, sooner than later. So these are all those same areas that, that Phil showed on the master plan currently.
Who's on the hook for ASRs?
For additional services?
Yeah, additional. Who's on the hook for ASRs, additional service?
In terms of design services or?
In general. I mean, when, when somebody submits an ASR, how is that handled? How is the fee? Like, how does that come out in the wash? Because that's usually where we get into trouble is with ASRs.
You know, in the design services, like an additional service would be, yes, like if, if we were to change scope or do, do more design. So that would be, you know, a submitted, you know, request to the owner. Um, you know, in this realm right now, you know, we're under contract to deliver this project. You know, there, there has been elements to it, you know, along the way, you know, the boat ramp, you know, changing direction with C Mar that, that, that have occurred. Um, you know, the net, you know, if there was an anticipated change, then it would be, you know, through design services through, um, you know, with the, with the owner, with the city.
But as far as C Mar process goes, once the contractor's on board, I think change requests at that point, where's the dividing line between where the C Mar picks that up under the max price versus where it comes back to the city as a contract increase?
That's what I meant. Exactly what Rob said. That's exactly what I meant.
I'm hearing that. I thought I'd just kind of jump into the conversation too. So that's a really good question. That's one of the areas where we pride ourselves on being the least amount we can change a contract is our goal always. And we, we take it as the city has come up with this amount of money. They want this project, so we do everything we can on our side to avoid that. Let me explain what I mean by that. There are times where there are things that are unforeseen. For example, we were doing a playground in Garland and we were, we had the whole project, you know, was designed out. We had a playground, we had the whole deal. When we started digging, nobody knew there was a whole swimming pool under that land. It was one of those things you can't know, right? So of course there was contingency money that was in the contract and we used the contingency money to take the, the swimming pool out and redo the, the ground under there. That's a common thing we do come up with. There's times where we find things that we didn't, nobody could know was under there and, or there's other times where we come across things where the city says, we could fix this now instead of later and it would save us a lot of money. I know utilities, you're already doing that, but there are those, those cost savings. There are other times where we need to order something. For example, we give you a guaranteed maximum price. We have a AC unit that's on there. And then we go, we, for whatever reason, in the process of ordering that, we order the AC unit, the cost goes up. That's not on you, that's on us. If, if we give you a guaranteed price and we tell our, our vendors, okay, this is approved, we've got the contract, we order materials. Right now, we're dealing with steel. Everybody knows about the tariffs and the changes. There are times where, and it is happening, where we are all, you know, hey, we have a tariff right now and we have to get it on order at this price. If the tariffs come in and if the price goes up, we are having to find ways to get jobs done regardless because we gave you a price. Now, again, you understand there are extenuating circumstances that come up and there are things that will come up. But overall, that's where it has benefited a lot of people. And the other thing I did want to mention, a couple of things you've mentioned about schedule. One thing that helps us be in a C Mar is we are able to work with you early on and we are able to design the schedule as we bid it out. And like, for example, we're doing a project with Little Elm and we've been working really closely with Little Elm in their park. They don't want to have any of the things that they've already got scheduled not going on. So we're having to work around the big events they have, the big things they have going. And we can design that in because we're the C Mar, because we're there. We don't come in with the idea that, hey, we've got to get this done. We've got sixty days, we want it done. Or you, you understand what I'm saying. So we come in with that mentality to begin with, which does, will help you out hopefully on this project as well. We can really schedule it where you can maximize the use of the park.
So I think just to summarize all that, between a contingency and possibly some allowances within the contract for unforeseen items, that's sort of basis of where we're going to start on any changes that pop up or unforeseen circumstances.
Absolutely.
And then once we expend that, hopefully we don't, then it, then it's a different discussion. That makes sense, but, you know, let's not find a swimming pool under.
Let me ask a question. With, with your experience, and you've seen the whole presentation and we've got five-year-old estimates.
estimates.
How long would you estimate before you would come back and say, here is a number that I'll hang my hat on?
We, we do that pretty quick if we have plans to look at. Now, we have not, again, we have not looked at plans in detail.
My thought is that's round zero.
We start with the plans and it will typically take just a few weeks for us to be developing. We'll be developing numbers and in a few weeks, I'd say a month, six weeks at the latest, we'll have a pretty good idea of what this is going to be unless we do.
One of the benefits of that, you know, at this point is that they're so far along, like they're not starting at 20 percent or 30 percent. They're actually much further along than your typical initial look.
But we don't have a set of architectural plans.
Well, they're, we, we have been working on them with, with the.
You don't have a build spec plan that you can drop on some?
Not 100 percent drawings, we have 60 percent. Yep. So they, that would be enough to start that GMP coming.
Moving from your question, just tagging along with this question. The numbers you gave us here, yes, we started at 2021. Numbers that you provided us, we're up to date as of 24. Are these, are these actually all 21 numbers?
20 numbers.
Because that tells me that none of the numbers here are worth it.
I mean, that's, that's the whole.
That's where.
Question mark. So when the RFP went out, we gave them a budget number with all of the scope in there, 16 cabins, you know, everything that was on the feasibility study. And part of that process is, yeah, we think we can do it for that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, now, again.
That, that's related.
Without seeing the plans. There weren't plans given in the RFP, but what we looked at was what we know it is and we, we looked at the number, which was 3.5.
In the financials that are provided, there was a proposed 24, 2024 number, which totaled $2.6 million.
Yes.
How accurate is that number?
Right. That number is, is based on the, is not based on the 60 percent drawings priced by the C Mar. So that's what the effort to, on those cost estimations to bring that number up to speed or up to current day is issuing, you know, drawings to a C Mar.
We could be looking at three, we could be possibly looking at three and a half billion dollars in total.
I hate to interrupt, but we have to, we have a council meeting we have to get to, so we're going to continue this in late work session, so keep your, keep your comments because we're three minutes away from turning the council meeting. So, and then after that, we will go into late work session and we'll get, we'll be able to continue this out there and ask your questions, because they're all great questions. All right. At that, we are at 7:27.
Council meeting. Today is June the 10th and it is 7:30 PM, actually it's 7:35 PM. And we are going to get started. We have a, record show that all council members present. And we, Councilman Cox is going to lead us in our prayer and then, and then the pledges.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening. We're here because we care deeply about our community and want to do what's right for the people who live, work, and serve here. As we go through tonight's meeting, give us open minds, kind hearts, and the wisdom to make thoughtful decisions. Help us to listen well, speak honestly, and work together even when we see things differently. We're especially grateful for those who keep our community safe, our first responders, firefighters, police officers, EMTs, and those serving in our military, domestic, and abroad. Please watch over them and their families. Thank you for the chance to serve here tonight. Guide us as we do what is best to care for this city and everybody in it. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, on the Texas flag. A pledge leads to the Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Counsel, does anyone have anything that they would like to say? Well, I would like to remind all of you that we do have a truck pull, Celebrate Highland Village is this weekend, and we are participating, aren't we?
We are.
That's, thank you, Councilman Hurst.
I'm very excited.
Thank you. I want to see the excitement on this end of the dais as well.
I brought the youth for it. I got, I got a youth teenager.
Good, good.
It's a ringer.
So the truck pull is going to be, I think, 11 o'clock, I hope. Everybody's going to be there a little early. Don't forget, we have, and I think there's going to be a big video on it, but it is Celebrate Highland Village, our residence, and there's a fish out, there, well, there's a 5K, I always skip over that part. But then there's a fish out, and then we have the truck pull, and then we end it with our concert and our fireworks. So everybody come out and enjoy. And counsel, I look forward to winning the truck pull.
What is different this year than last year from Celebrate Highland Village?
It's all going to be at Doubletree Ranch Park. Look at there. Wow. I think I passed the test. Okay. So anybody else have anything? All right. And we're going to move right along to city manager and staff reports. I probably just stepped on your toes.
No, no worries at all. I think you did cover quite a bit of it. One thing I do want to mention in addition to that, because of the fireworks being in a different location, we actually informed and advised, informed residents in the area, including Lewisville, with social media posts and a letter sent to over 600 households within Lewisville and Highland Village. We've also contacted the City of Lewisville Communications Department, and they are sharing the information, their communication channels as well. Additionally, the event has been promoted through a press release, an online ad on the Cross Timbers Gazette, multiple social media posts, roadside banners, a postcard sent to every Highland Village household, the utility bill insert, the city manager's report, and the villager email newsletter. So I do want to thank Lori for having the foresight to notifying the residents in the area because the fireworks are going to be in a different location. So some may be hearing it when they have it in the past, and also extending that to Lewisville as well. So we've tried to do a thorough job to make sure people are aware that the fireworks are going to be right there.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
With the fireworks, being a dog owner, I know 100 million people are watching this right now, but with the fireworks going on, it's best to keep your animal inside. Fireworks scare them. They can hear it even if you can't hear it. So if you're a pet owner, let people know, keep them inside during the firework time so they're not running out, and then we're not all searching the streets for them, so.
Exactly right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then we have a village report.
We do, I do want to mention, Mayor, that it was requested by Councilmember Hurst to do a DCTA recap of the last meeting, so that is in your report. If you have any questions about it, I can answer those. But we will expect one of those every month after the DCTA meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that? I'm sorry.
Do you have a question, but it wasn't specifically about DCTA? But can I ask Paul?
You can certainly ask. Anytime.
Can we clarify or just remind everyone who may be paying attention, since it is severe weather season for us, what the sirens are meant to signify? Because it's not necessarily just a tornado, right?
That's correct. And well, the fire chief just walked in. Did you hear the question?
Don't make me, I don't remember what I said.
Councilmember Feaster had mentioned, of course, with severe weather season, and we do have warning sirens, and specifically what those sirens are for, not just a tornado, but.
So the regional adopted furious, by an hour winds or greater, hail inch and a quarter or tornado.
So in the proximity of the siren or within the city, or?
City.
How's that determined? Just any part of the city, then?
Yes.
All the sirens go?
Yeah. And there's a couple of different capabilities out there. Most cities are manual, which means you have personnel that are watching that, typically myself or Chief Coslin, or the on-duty captain. Lake City's adopted a program that hits the National Weather Service Polygon and then activates automatically. So we're actually looking at that to see how accurate that is, because there's the criteria for activation, and then there's the art of activating. So at times, you could predict that out too far, and then it dissipates before it hits our city. And that's been a problem in the past.
And there is no differentiator between, in the siren, between a severe winds and a tornado? It's the same tone?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
And the intention is, of course, if you are outdoors, to go indoors to find further information. And as you mentioned with Lake Dallas, I could hear Lake Dallas sirens the other night.
I heard Lewisville's. We spent a great 10 minutes in the bathroom.
Yeah. So on this last round, there's a website called National Weather Service. It's like a chat box to where you're getting emergency managers from around the region chiming in on when they activate.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Well, can I go back to DCTA?
Sure.
So with all the stuff, and I see what they talked about, but when will we find out how many people in Highland Village are buying train passes?
Let me make sure I can find that out for you, because I know there's certain data that was not available, but that, let me find out.
Everyone's buying digitally, right?
Right, right.
A zip code and address can easily non-tie them, but tie them. And then I'd also like to ask for the number of rides provided to Allen and Fairview for the first up through April 30th of this year compared to the number of rides GoZone has provided for Highland Village residents.
Okay. 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 I'll see what I can find for you.
Thank you.
Okay. We got that? All right. So next on the agenda is visitor comments. Do we have anyone wishing?
Do we have a village report?
Oh, sorry. I lied.
You're so excited.
What's up, guys? It's Officer Dave with HBPD. Let's talk micro mobility devices.
Hey, Officer Dave, do bikes count as micro mobility devices?
Yes. All bikes, including e-bikes, regular bikes. I don't care what kind of bike. They're all micro mobility devices.
Hey, Officer Dave, does a scooter count as a micro mobility device?
Yes.
Well, I see skateboards out there. Does that count?
Guys, yes. Micro mobility devices include traditional bicycles, e-bikes, e-scooters, segways, hoverboards, gliders, unicycles, skateboards, even razors. And guess what? If you're under 18, you must wear a helmet. If you don't wear a helmet, you could get a ticket.
So Officer Dave, does this count as wearing a helmet?
No, guys. Okay, guys, I'll see you on the trail. Y'all be safe out there.
Heads up Highland Village, Tech Dot will begin construction on the FM 2499 and FM 407 intersection on June 16th. The project includes adding dual left turn lanes in all four directions of the intersection. Tech Dot tells us the project has 144 days, or nearly five months, to complete. There will be various lane closures during that time and heavy equipment in the area, so please use caution when construction workers are present. You may wish to seek alternate routes. Improvements at this intersection have been requested in nearly every city mobility survey. So while there will be a few months of discomfort, once complete, we should see much better traffic flow through this area. We are looking forward to seeing everyone at Celebrate Highland Village this Saturday. All events will be at Doubletree Ranch Park. The evening kicks off at 5:30 PM with food trucks, a kid's zone featuring an inflatable slide, a rock climbing wall, and Noah's Ark petting zoo. Plus, the splash pad will be open for the evening. The Dallas Journey Tribute Band, Escape, will be rocking the place starting at 6:30 PM. End the evening with a spectacular fireworks show designed specifically for the area. Inside the park will be the best viewing spot for this show. Check out highlandvillage.org/celebrate for all the details. I will see you there.
Okay, now, now we can do visitor comments. So do we have anyone wishing to address the council for visitor comments? No? Okay. Well, moving right along. We're going to do the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion without vote and vote without, and vote without discussion. Sorry, guys. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. An item will be moved to the action agenda for discussion if speaker's request form is submitted indicating a person's desire to comment on an item posted on the consent agenda. So counsel, does anyone wish to move anything from the action?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move item 15, which is consider an ordinance amending the city's code of ordinances, repealing certain school zones for Highland Village Elementary, adding number 17, Resolution 2025-3191, declaring certain police property a surplus and authorizing city manager to dispose of said property. And item number 18, similar resolution 25, 2025-3192, add those three, 15, 17, and 18, to consent.
Okay. Counsel, is everybody okay with that? All right. So consent agenda consists of, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on May 13th, 2025. Consider Resolution 2025-3188, authorizing a contract with precision fence and construction for the Unity Park Baseball Fencing Project through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the inter-local purchasing system. Number 12, consider Resolution 2025-3189, authorizing a two-year extension of the terms of the agreement with Valley View Consulting LLC for investment advising services. Number 13, receive budget reports for period ending April 30th, 2025. Moving number 15, consider ordinance 2025-1325, amending section 20.03.053 of the city's code of ordinances to repeal certain school zones relating to Highland Village Elementary School and making other amendments. This will be the first of two reads. Number 17, consider resolution 2025-3191, declaring certain police property a surplus and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said property, including presentation to Assistant Police Chief Mark Stewart on the occasion of his retirement from the city of Highland Village. And number 18, consider resolution 2025-3192, declaring a certain police property a surplus and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said property, including presentation to retired Sergeant Paul Kimerlin in recognition of his retirement and prior service to the city of Highland Village. Counsel, that's the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion is we approve the consent agenda items as per.
Okay. We have a motion with, and then.
I vote on that agenda. So one of those resolutions.
Okay. Did I ever read it wrong? Let me get my glasses.
I think it's 3192.
Yes. Did I say that wrong?
That's right.
That one just says 3191. It's a typo on the agenda.
It's 3192 on ours.
One is 3191, and one is 3192.
Did I say that wrong?
No, yours is right.
Oh.
So just for clarification.
Oh, it's not. String is wrong, but it's not.
Oh, okay. It's not wrong on mine. So, sorry. Get my glasses so I can see. Okay. So counsel, so there's no corrections, correct? We're good? Okay. So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Beurenza, and we have a second by Councilmember Feaster. Counsel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Harry's 7-0. Now, we are going to do number, we didn't meet in closed session, so we are going to number 16. Consider Resolution 2025-3190, authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute a construction manager-at-risk contract with guaranteed maximum price with Dean Electric, Inc., DBA Dean Construction, related to pilot and old park improvement projects. And we had this, we started this discussion in early work session, and we're going to continue the discussion now. So Phil, you want to pick up where we left off?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and bring up Dean Construction again, and they're going to speak a little bit more about the process.
As we left off in there, there were a couple of things I noticed that might have been questions, might have been unclear, maybe not, but I just wanted to address. So the process with the C-MAR is we get a proposal, as we got the RFP that came out, that asks us to, you know, look at what we're doing, make sure the schedule makes sense, make sure everything looks good for us, put in a proposal for a percentage basis that we will work as the C-MAR, correct? At this point, what you're approving tonight is just that percentage basis and just us coming on as the C-MAR. From this point, we then develop, as we talked about, we develop the budget, and as we look at the plans, they will change. So of course, our budget numbers are only what we can find out then and what we know until we actually go out to bid. When the project, when it actually does come out to bid, then we'll actually have numbers that are bid in. Those are the numbers you hang your hat on. Those are the numbers you know are the good numbers for sure. We do a really good job of working with the architects and working with the city to make sure that our numbers coming into that, we kind of know where we're going to be, in other words. But when we get those numbers, then that is what is presented to you to decide from that point, okay, do we want to do all of this? Do we want to make changes? Is there any, you know, anything that we didn't expect? Or is it exactly what we expected? So what you're doing tonight is not actually, you're not actually confirming any of those numbers, if that makes sense. I just want to make sure everybody understood that. All we're doing tonight is coming on into the process and coming in as the C-MAR. But the numbers that you're tied into for the project and that become the guaranteed maximum price will be after everything's competitively bid out, all of the services.
Okay. Is there more to the presentation, Phil?
This is the last slide, and, right Heather?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you want to come and speak to it?
We were right there.
Did you have any questions before she goes? Yes, yes, Ms. Hurst. That's what I'm, Hurst.
25,000 benefit per year, but the graph we showed didn't have an ROI for almost 20 years. So I'm really confused of seeing, I guess if we would have all the apples and oranges laid out, like with cabin, without cabin, and all, and have a side by side, I just don't even know what we're looking at price-wise now. I'm literally confused.
If I may run to Councilwoman Hurst.
No, that's all right. I answer by lots of names.
This is, this is the 50% occupancy. The original one with that payback over 18 years was the 75% occupancy with no cost fluctuations, fully burdened. So that's kind of like the all-in. This is kind of like the worst case. But, and I shouldn't say worst case, because there's always can be many different cases. That's the delta.
So how long does it take to pay off only 50%? Because if 75% was 18 years.
No, you don't. You don't. Because that was 130,000 a year. You don't.
Yeah. I just, I wish there was just a way to see everything line by line, because right now we're getting with, without, this and that, and seeing it all on a spreadsheet would make way more sense.
So, okay, Councilman Feaster, do you have a question?
I did. I guess, I want to go back just to the C-MAR process, because I guess I'm a little confused. And what was included in the bid package that Dean Construction and Nash Industries bid on? What was in that package? Was it a 60% set of drawings prepared by Dunaway? Was it just a scope of work?
It was a scope, a statement of work that outlines the 16 cabins, yeah, and a project budget of $3,000, $3,500 million. But it had the 16 cabins, had the, the work that the.
Well, all the work we reviewed, but they didn't look at any drawings. They didn't look at anything.
No.
So their bid of 420,000, they're saying that based on the budget that we gave them, they would charge us 420,000. But that is not what we're going to negotiate as their fee, because we don't know what the cost is. Is that correct?
Right. It's based off of a percentage.
So we're selecting them based off of a theoretical budget that we've come up with and what they're willing to do the work for, but it's not, it's still not accurate to any sort of, I mean, it could be $4.5 million, right? Dean's fee would be whatever percentage they agreed to, which I don't see in this anywhere. I mean, perhaps I missed it in the, in the write-up, in the agenda. But I guess the 420,000 is almost meaningless to me, except that they're willing to do it for cheaper than Nash was, given a theoretical scope of work. Is that, am I missing something here? Because they're not hold, hold, held to the 420,000, correct? They're held to a percentage of what the final cost is. And, and back to then, to Councilman Hurst's point, we don't know what those costs are or, you know. So what are we actually looking at here? Just selecting Dean to help us, cost unknown, but a percentage, correct?
That pre-costing or the pre-construction or pre-evaluation services will get us to that point. So to answer your question, I'm trying to answer it because of that, and maybe you can help, is the price that they have, or the consultant price that they have provided is based off of $3.5 million. Is that correct?
Yes. And I think, I think the confusion may be typically when we do C-MAR contracts, when we do RFPs, the RFPs, we have to just put in whatever the RFP asks us how to put it in. But when we do RFPs, all we are giving you at this point, at this stage, is our percentage for the services, the general conditions, and the fees. So we do everything for C-MAR portion. We do everything for general conditions and fees. It's just a percentage.
What is it?
Yeah. So that's my question, because that.
I was going to say, I think it's 8.5%. Can you look that up, Ryan? You may have it right there.
Because all we see are dollars in the write-up.
Looking at dollars, but it's, and the dollars were based on the, just using that 3.5.
But the dollars are going to move, the percentage is not, correct?
It would just be a percentage. And it's going to move as the project changes. Everybody knows.
Well, the dollars will, not the percentage, though.
Percentage will be the same, right.
So we need to know the percentage, not the dollar amount, in my mind, at this point, right? Because the dollar amount's meaningless, because we don't know the total price.
Does the resolution need to be updated with a percentage as opposed to a dollar?
Everything's based off of the percentage, not the dollars, right?
But we have no percentage in the resolution. Right now, it just.
Well, yeah. So to answer your question, yeah, we would need to, that, I don't see a percentage in here.
Guaranteed maximum price.
But that's not a percentage of the C-MAR work.
That's right. It's not a percentage, right?
Right. Guaranteed maximum price, we don't have now, because we haven't done that portion.
Yeah, that's a.
This is just the percentage of the fees for the.
And I think that's, yeah, I absolutely think that that's what is so confusing to everybody, is we don't know. You can tell us what your percentage is, but we're not going to know what that number is, but we're.
But you're also not committing to it. And that I did want to make sure. You're not committing to any set amount.
No, I understand.
Just, just so you know.
But I want the resolution to reflect the percentage that we're accepting Dean Construction is being held to, not a dollar amount that's not tied to anything and can and will change, right? But the percentage should be consistent or constant, right? So, and I just didn't see the percentage listed anywhere.
It's because it's not.
Okay. Well.
It's not in the resolution.
Should it be, then? Because that is what we're.
Based on the discussion I'm hearing, yes.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're on, we are at 60% plans, correct? So at 60% plans, you should be able to do a quantity takeoff. So that's why I'm like, we have all these numbers, but nobody's actually seen a, it's in here, the quantity, at least the quantities of what we're looking at, which would help make a better estimation of these theoretical magical prices that is 10 times larger than
So to that point regarding the resolutions, section one of the resolution would be, you know, contractor fees not to exceed 8.5% of a guaranteed maximum price inclusive of the contractor fees, you know, of a amount to be further approved by the council or something like that, right? Not the 420,000, which is based off of a price of 4,137 million, right? So, because that number, those numbers are going to change. So I just don't think the resolution is what, written the way it is, I don't think that's the way we're agreeing to bringing on Dean Construction. That's my opinion, but, because every number we're seeing is not, not accurate.
We can speak to that, just in terms of the RFP and the answer of Dean's bid was a 3.5% number on construction phase and then an 8.5% number on general conditions. Do you want to explain what those, how those break down?
So, yes, and the confusion I think you're talking about is it did ask us to break that into a dollar amount and a percentage. And so we've given the 3.5% and the 8.5% are our total C-MAR fees. That's how that works out. The numbers were based on just what was given in the RFP.
Correct. But the resolution makes no mention of the percentages, which, yeah.
He's mentioning on what it should say.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that the dollars will fluctuate, right? But the percentage should not.
It doesn't.
Right. And that's what we're agreeing to with Dean is the eight or the, whatever, eight and then the 3.5%, correct?
Eight and a half general condition fee and the 3.5 on the construction fee.
So eight and a half and.
Eight and a half on the general conditions.
Okay. And then three and a half on.
Three and a half on the construction fee.
Which is 12, which is one point higher than you said you're normally, between nine and 11.
Yeah, nine, nine and 11. I mean, we, to be a little bit fair to us, we have seen a great deal of inflation over the last 18 months. And so, you know, I mean, we too have to make sure that we're safeguarding ourselves as well, because as we explained earlier, you know, when certain, like the tariffs were enacted, we saw, we are currently seeing steel prices skyrocket, right? And we understand right now that that's just what's happening, and it's happening in different parts of our industry all over. And so we, we are doing our best to keep our prices fair while also making sure to safeguard ourselves during such a tumultuous time, you know, with tariffs and such.
So can, sorry.
No, go ahead. Yeah, your light's on. Go ahead.
enacted, we saw, we are currently seeing steel prices skyrocket, right? And we understand right now that that's just what's happening. And it's happening in different parts of our industry all over. And so we, we are doing our best to keep our prices fair while also making sure to safeguard ourselves during such a tumultuous time, you know, with tariffs and such.
So can, sorry.
No, go ahead. No, you're, yeah, your light's on. Go ahead.
I'll turn off. Can you just briefly describe, since there is a split, eight and a half and three and a half, of what's falling into the general conditions?
Sure.
Versus what's construction, because I know there's a break.
So general conditions are going to be what pays for your job site superintendent, your project manager, your foreman, the job site trailer, any of the technological equipment that your job site superintendent's going to have out there. Things like your dumpster, the portable restrooms that will be on site, just the general items that you wouldn't see built into the specific construction trade items when we put them out to bid, right? So there's not going to be a bid item for portable restrooms on the bid. That's covered under our general condition fee of 8.5%.
Or 3.5%.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 3.5 is the construction fee, 8.5 is general conditions.
Okay. Sorry, I wrote that up. Okay.
And you lock in your fee once you get your bids in?
No, we would, that's what tonight would be, is locking in the fee.
I mean, I reframed.
Or the percentage.
Do you lock in your materials number when your bids come in?
For, for the city, we do, right? We aren't locked into it as Dean Construction, the company. Again, you know, if we see price increases on steel or lumber or anything, those cost increases are not passed on to the city. Those cost increases are absorbed by Dean Construction throughout the project. Once you have a guaranteed maximum price in place, that is your guaranteed maximum price. You know, we talked a little about like change requests in the meeting. Those are processed through contingency. Contingency is built into that guaranteed max price. So that's not your guaranteed max price plus contingency. That's built into the guaranteed max price. So for example, it's, let's just say it's $200,000. So you have $200,000 worth of funds to use towards any unforeseen events like the swimming pool, you know, example we gave you earlier. But if material costs are happening throughout your project, you are not being passed that cost on. We are absorbing that cost.
Hang on. Oh, go ahead, one more, and then...
So what is, two-part question. What is the contingency percentage for this? And typically when your bids come in, how long are the contractors holding their prices?
We ask our subcontractors to do exactly what we do, which is to lock their price in. In the event that they just can't, and right now we have a structural steel contractor who just cannot, we are accepting the absorption of that cost because they can't. It would put them out of business and we don't want to do that. So we ask them, when we're signing subcontract agreements, to honor their price through the entirety of the project. We understand that things are happening that are causing companies to have to come to us and say, hey, we just can't absorb a 50% cost increase all on our own, you know? Can we negotiate that? And that's something as the construction manager at risk that we do over here so that you do not see that cost increase on your end in any way. I'm sorry, what was the other question?
What's the contingency percentage?
I think that's a number that you all would decide on.
No, he would know the answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the guy that knows the answer.
Well, at this point where you, we would develop that within the process of value engineering, determining the actual scope of project, the actual program elements. You know, we have a design to build budget right now of the 3.5 million, you know? Are there program items that change? Are there elements that change? Then what percentage of that contingency can we fit in, you know, with the defined program?
When you're putting your costs together, it's a 15, a 10, 15 or 20. What are you running?
You know, at a high level, we would use, in a concept level, we'd use something around 20%. And then as we go up to 30% drawings, 60% drawings, that percentage would go down.
Well, I think...
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I was going to say, just to piggyback on that, let's just put this in, let's clarify this. When is the GMP developed? At what stage, 95% is the GMP developed and that's when the price is set, because that's what we all kind of want to know, right? It's not set at 60%, right? Because it's going to be a very optimistic or conservative number at 60, but 95% is that establishing the GMP?
Set at when the bid's coming.
Whether those plans are at 95% or 100%, we kind, we see in both ways. Sometimes the plans are at 95% with just like small things that still need to be, you know, tied up.
And then it's a contingency or an allowance that kind of closes the gap, right?
Or 100% plans when we put that out to bid, and then you would have your GMP locked in, your guaranteed maximum price.
I mean, I get that's the average, but what as a city is our practice? Is it 95 or 100?
Well, I don't know that we've done contractor at risk.
Well, I mean, but when we sit plans out to bid, typically when we send our plans out to bid, are we at 95 or 100?
Other 100.
Well, I think they would be at 100 because we usually designed the build, right?
If we're doing a traditional bid, it's going to be 100%.
Correct. Yeah.
Councilman Kixmiller has a question.
Oh, go ahead. Then I'll ask.
Oh, one follow-up, just to follow on, on the contingency. You asked how the contingency's set. There are times that we actually do vary that for variables that we see in the project. We have had projects where we know the irrigation is going to be a concern and we develop more contingency into that. The good thing about the contingency and allowance or contingency is if we don't use it, you keep it. It doesn't get used. So we can develop that when we're developing the guaranteed maximum price. Sometimes that does change. Typically, it's a pretty standard, but that is something that we can develop.
Now, just a comment. Appreciate what you do, you know? What's all the name of looked at some of your other work? Appreciate that. Understand the process, understand the concept, understand the debate on the percentages that can be all over. Smaller the job, the percent goes up. Bigger the job, the percent goes down. Appreciate that you've walked in here and you can understand there's a lot of moving parts, okay? There's assumptions based on five-year-old data, okay? There's assumptions based upon new systems that we just now found out officially that are failing, that we need to invest $3 million plus into, that we did not know until now, even when we started this project, we didn't know that. So that's not on you, that's on us as a city. So I applaud bringing in someone that can look at all of that. But that said, we don't know how good those numbers are. I assume they're pretty good, but we don't know, okay? Because we haven't really been able to study it. So looking at you doing a contractor, I got a simple question. What if we took $2.8 million out of the build project and now it's a $700,000 project? Of interest, not of interest? Be honest.
It would still be a great deal of interest to us, right? Nothing would change about the process here for us. If it's, we do $700,000 projects. I just want to put that out there.
I appreciate that because I think to get some of the things that we know moving forward, we're going to need a C Mar.
Sure.
Well, I like that.
And part of, and part of that benefit, I think, in working with Dunaway through this project that you'll find is that as we get in here, because we, we heard you say in the workshop, you found this, this issue that just popped up with the leach field. So we heard that, right? And so, you know, as we work through this budgeting process, we would work closely with Dunaway and with the city to value engineer anything that we can during the budgeting process. So if you guys say, hey, we're, we're just, you guys are turning us in a 60% budget and it's just out of range, we, we're not going to be able to do it, you know? We can all sit down collectively and start looking at ways to save you money on your project. And if that means, you know, having to make some design changes, of course, that's good.
I appreciate that. Can we go back a slide to the summary slide?
The questions.
I'm sorry.
I think we're on that slide.
Go to the summary slide. So I appreciate that and I like that answer. I like that answer. I wish we had that answer four years ago, okay? We didn't. We, as the three of us on council, we didn't know. We collectively as a city, we didn't know what we know today. And that's why we're all here, is trying to understand that. So I make a comment that I think it's premature to look at this specific resolution as relates to an unknown set of projects, okay? I don't think, forget the percentage. I don't think that we could negotiate an agreement without knowing what's going to be in that, okay? Because my next point is if I look at this and see if we do all of these investments, we get $25,000 a year and the assumptions we know are all over the board, okay? When we started the project, it was a half million dollars a year net benefit to the city. That's the goal, okay? I don't know if anyone can tell me how we're going to get a half a million dollars a year net, okay, off of all of these projects. Where's that going to come from? Okay? Where's it going to come from? It's half a million more to the top line with no incremental expense on the bottom. I don't, I don't hear anyone, okay? And I got a new nickname the other day. My grand, my wife calls me and my kids call me, you know, gom, you know, grumpy old man. I let it out, okay? Let it out.
You said it, not me.
But I'm just, I'm just asking that question because, you know, I voted for this in 2021, certain assumptions, and I don't see them today. And I think as a council, to say we're going to do the sewer upgrade when actually here's an option that we say we maintain it, we don't know what the options, we haven't talked about them, okay? The water, you know, yeah, needs to be upgraded to 60 years old, okay? We've got some water in our city 60 years old, right Scott? Already, okay? And I haven't seen a plan that we're going to upgrade all of those at this point in time. So there's alternatives, okay? So all I'm saying is I think we've come to a point, you know, fork in the road, that there's an unanswerable question. And you coming in right now with 60% plans is not going to put a half a million on top. It's just not.
Well, if I can offer just perhaps a counterpoint to that, I think at this stage, at 60%, if I were to want to start building anything, I wanted to get somebody on board that knows what the pricing is, right? So at this point, we can take a Dunaway plan at 60%. We can give it to Dean. They can look at it and say, this is going to be 3.5 million. That gives us a solid number where we can run models on a financial model, right? But they can also then say, hey, if your budget's actually 1.5 million, you need to cut this, this, this and this. This is where you'll get to and this is what you'll have left over. I don't see any way of us doing that without bringing on a contractor.
What I'm saying is they could make, I think if we ran the numbers, you could say the cabins are free. Free, okay? No cost to us. You don't get to that half a million dollars net.
Well, I'm not trying to get to the half million necessarily.
No, but that's what, that's what I'm trying to bring forth, is I don't see a path forward to find that half a million dollars in cost savings and engineering, you know? Maybe I'm wrong, okay? But I think that needs to be put on the table before we spend a lot more time, okay? We've been five years into it.
I think Councilman Nelson has it.
Yeah, so a quick question. So we're saying that we can't get a GMP until the plans are 95 to 100%. Yet there's a GMP in the resolution. What is the definition of the GMP in the resolution? Is that a 60% plan, the 4.1 million?
No, that's based off the budget that the bid had in it, based off of a written scope of work and, you know, wishlist.
Right. So what does it mean, though? I mean, if it's a signed resolution...
It doesn't mean anything. The only thing that means anything is the percentage at which Dean has put in their bid of 8.5 and 3.5%.
Okay.
Right?
It's just arbitrary.
Based off of the numbers we gave them, they're willing to do it for 420,000, right? But what they're actually willing to do it for is 8.5, 3.5, right?
12%.
So, yeah, roughly. Maxed out at 420.
So basically, you take it, go so...
No, 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 no.
No, no, you can't even say that now.
As of that number, that's, I want those numbers out of there. That's the problem. Well, that's what I'm saying. If we, if we stuck to it, it'd just be a max and percentage would go out the window. So it's up to us, but can we, can we write it in a way that it's...
I don't think you can.
Well, I think if you're going to set a maximum dollar amount, once you start hitting that dollar amount, then you're just starting cleaving parts of your project out of there, right? I don't think you necessarily want to limit yourself to that, right? That should be what the council does, not necessarily what limits Dean or their contract, right? Because we want them to give us the best product that we can get for the money that they're willing to do it for. It's up to the council to say that we're willing to only spend 4.137 million, right? If they say you're only going to get A, B and C for 4.1 million and not D, E, F, that's on the council then at that point to pull the ejection lever and, you know, go home or whatever, or, or cut the project in half or reduce the scope to John's point to where it's 700,000, right? But I don't see any way we're going to actually get there with real numbers if we don't take the first step of bringing on a contractor that's willing to do the work for us.
Second question.
Sure.
What is the magic net benefit number? We keep talking about 500,000, we've seen 250. Is there a magic number?
I think when this whole project, when the whole thing started, it was we need to find revenue sources. We're build out, we need to be looking at all options and find revenue sources and this, this is where that, this evolved from. I don't remember the 500,000. And the three of us, Robert and John and I were...
Don't ask me. That was so long ago.
Well, we were on council.
It was pre-COVID times, wasn't it?
You know, it was before the other four. But again, it made, made sense way back in 2020, 2021. But that was the whole goal, was to find revenue sources for the city. And now, of course, those numbers have changed. It's five years later and, and I'm with, I'm with everybody on the council. We're not seeing the real, the real scope here. I'm with Robert. We're not going to know unless we have somebody that can put the real numbers together. But then I'm also looking at the other slides that are like, do we even go forward with this? Because are we going to make, are we going to be able to generate revenue, which was the goal, the ultimate goal? So, you know, I'm like Ron, I'm like all of us. We're all kind of confused because number one, we've never done a C Mar like this. This is, this is totally outside and I've been around for a long time. And so this is, this is all great to me. I'm very thankful that we have people on council that understand this stuff and can, can tell it to us and, and ask the questions, the right questions. And we do have very knowledgeable council members that understand all of this. So I guess, and you're fixing to say something, go ahead.
I just, I would like to share a piece of information that may be somewhat helpful through this as well, as far as the resolution is concerned too, is that we're also charging $0 for the pre-construction fee. So stepping in now and, and giving you a 60%, a 75% budget, that is not a cost to you from Dean Construction. That's free for us to give you, right? And so you can adopt us here at this meeting and get those numbers. And with the way we typically see contracts, just to speak to this being your first go with a CMAR, is that there will be an exhibit or an amendment to our CMAR contract. So you, I'm not saying you would, like you have to, I just would like to explain. So a city typically would hire us during a meeting like this, and then we would receive a contract that speaks to our pre-construction fee, which is zero, and our general conditions and construction fee, okay? And we would work with you and Dunaway through the rest of the design process with budgeting, give you your numbers so that they can be plugged in however you want to see them to get to the information you're looking for. And then when this goes out to bid and we present you with a guaranteed max price, in the event that you would approve it, okay? In the event that you're like, okay, this is how we want to see it, then that information would be inserted into what we've either seen as an exhibit or an amendment to our original contract, then approving us and giving us the go-ahead to move forward with construction. So again, I just want to, I just want to be so clear in saying that today wouldn't be So again, I just want to, I just want to be so clear in saying that today wouldn't be about giving us the go-ahead for any construction. This is simply giving us the go-ahead to work with Dunaway and work with the city to try to get you the project that you want under budget, hopefully.
And true numbers.
And true numbers.
Sure. Go ahead, Rhonda.
When she's finished, I have a question. Okay. So I have a completely flip the script thing. We just sent something out to bid that nobody bid on, right? We have plans, we have a known, the C Mar to the council is a whole new thing. Why don't we test drive the C Mar with the project that nobody bid on? We know what we have, we know what we quantities, we already have a budget for it. So why can't we try the C Mar method on a known when we're, we're jumping at this unknown, which we don't know anything about but magical fairy numbers? So why don't we just flip the script and do it on a known?
Well, we've got boat dock, that's a known approved. We've got a gatehouse, known approved with no bids. There's pieces of the big project that are in the C Mar contract that are not at dispute. What's at dispute is 16 cabins.
But again, there's no risk. From what I'm hearing, there's no risk for us to proceed. Dunaway's already on the hook to do the plans. Right? Dean would be on the hook to provide us the pre-construction services for free, which I, that'll be my next question if that's a problem. But what's the risk of us proceeding unless we're now contemplating terminating the entire project? We're going to proceed with something, right? We're going to proceed with a sewer improvement or a water improvement, perhaps.
Perhaps.
So.
And that's a big caveat because that impacts this.
Well, it's a chicken and egg, I guess. But for me, having the contractor willing to help us out to determine a cost is going to inform all of the choices we have to make going down the line. And as long as we have an adequate escape hatch on not being bound to build something that's 4.2 million dollars at the end of the day, we can reduce it down to 700,000 and still proceed. I think what's the risk? Right? We have more risk by just flying blind and continuing to do what we've been doing and hoping our bids come in low when we have no idea. Right?
Yeah, I really think the C Mar, in my mind, is the easy part of this equation. I, I think here's a number here. We try to fit a budget within that. The more difficult and artful part, to John's point, is we were looking at $500,000 annually in revenue. And I believe when that was done, of course, we didn't know the extension, the extent of the water and sewer improvements. That was based on 75% occupancy. Even at 50% occupancy, it was bringing in 350 or something. In my mind, pretty easy questions. Now, long-term, those questions aren't as easy. And I think to your point, John, when you're saying, how are we going to make up that revenue? We're not. I think the decision with council has to be, are we comfortable with doing something where we might get 25,000 a year? Or do we look at coming back off of that and doing something completely different?
Well, but is this an opportunity now for us, given your point, which I agree with? Is this an opportunity for us to now look at and say, what are our options today rather than the cabins? What other options do we have available to us today that would be possibly impact the budget less in a cost scenario and better in a revenue scenario? Right? What could that be? Could that be additional RV pads or some other scenario, some other configuration on all that land out there? We haven't explored those for five years, but we're at this, we're at this fork in the road that we've got to make that determination. Is this a point where we step back and say, what other options do we have available to us?
I'd like to add on to, to Councilmember Freyurenza is, I don't even think it's fair to do a service to Dean on something that we need to figure out what we're going to do. We're asking them to put out all this labor and do all this pre-construction that might be a $700,000 project. Let's, I'm just making up stuff. And they put all this blood, sweat, and tears, and they're held this. I mean, they're, they do their, I mean, they got payroll, they got things to do, we're taking up their time, listening to everything that's going on. I really think we need to step back and go to the basics and see what we're looking at because a lot has changed in five years. And I don't think it's fair to get anybody engaged when we don't even know if we're going to move forward.
Okay. Council, is anybody else?
No, I would offer as a council, boat dock. Any questions on that?
What about gatehouse?
Oh, oh, and gatehouse. I mean, there's pieces of it that we know that are ready to bid. Okay. So my, my thought is if you're going to do a C Mar, get started on it. Do it on those things that we know. And then do a reset on all the other because.
I think Kevin has a, I think.
I was going to ask.
Honestly, you know, based on the C Mars we've done, C Mars are intended to be, you know, generally are used with larger projects and have a lot of moving parts that are, tend to be more complicated, you know, like multi-sport athletic facilities and, and, I mean, just larger projects, you know, do a, to cherry pick a couple of, of smaller elements out of, of this project, I think is overkill using a C Mar. Be honest with you.
Except we haven't been able to get them done.
Well, be that as it may, that's, that's why, I mean, that's why staff went to bundling the entire park project and to use this method in order to be able to, to get a, a larger, you know, single project that we can then get folks to, you know, get that, you know, get Dean and, or somebody, you know, whoever it be, you know, to, to pull in the contractors and do those bids.
But to your point, we bundled it with a bunch of unknowns that may or may not happen. So to get the city comfortable and know how a C Mar works, I get that it's a smaller project, but they say they've done smaller projects. So why don't we just go with we know so it gives us time to reset on what we're going to do? Instead of doing the whole enchilada, can we just have the nachos?
Of course, if you do that at this point, you're going to have to go back and redo the RFP because they, they submitted their proposal based on the full project.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
And we've got a timeline of.
And we're still, yeah, and the timeline's still clicking on the.
To that point, can we not just run the process as it was intended and then pull back?
Yes.
Once we have more.
That, that's exactly what they were saying.
That is what we've been talking about.
Yes.
Right? There is no reason we can't just pull back to a gatehouse or a boat ramp in six months or whatever, based off of the fact that Dean has provided us with a GMP that we can't stomach. Right?
And I think it's even sooner than that. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I'm just throwing dates out. It doesn't matter the dates. I'm just saying, we can get there fairly quickly to where we can make an educated decision. Whereas if we just pull back and say, let's rebid these things and hope for the best, I still see value in the C Mar, even if Dean is willing to accept a reduced scope because we can't, you know, cabins no longer make sense, but boat ramp and, and gatehouse do. Right? What's, there's no risk to us at this point to continue forward with the C Mar process if Dean is willing to accept a reduced scope. I don't, I, I don't see it. But it's information for us to make a better decision in the future.
I don't see how we can move forward without a number.
How are you going to get a number?
No. There's another.
That's the whole point of using the C Mar though, isn't it?
No, there's another way to get a number. Because again, we've got.
How are we going to get the number, John?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're working on a lot of assumptions today. Okay, five-year-old assumptions. Okay. And we know we've got to make the big investments if we're going to do any of them. I haven't seen a model yet that shows me, based on this, you know, 25,000 a year benefit. What does the top line have to be? In other words, build a model that says with this model, we can make some meaningful revenue to the city. You can put in assumptions that say we could do that. Okay? That's a pretty easy spreadsheet. I'll build a spreadsheet to do that. And then we can look at that at the next council meeting and say, oh, here's how we get the half a million to the top that makes sense. That's an easy model. We don't have to have real numbers to do it. It just says, okay, I'm pretty sure if you could do the cabins for free and still won't get to the number from a cost standpoint. Still won't get to a meaningful revenue number for a city that our total revenue utilities and everything is what, 50 million a year? Okay? So to have something meaningful, you know, it's got to be more than a percent to be meaningful to the city. That's all I'm getting at. And then we started with great grandiose plans. They aren't looking like it. And I don't want to ask them to keep looking at stuff when you can model it and find out can you get there or not. I mean, we thought we had that five years ago. And now we've gone from a big number down to basically, I forget which slide it was, you know, $25,000 a year. That's, that's all I'm saying. Work on the stuff that we know, but I mean, this, this side.
But what do we know? We don't know anything.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know occupancy rates, we don't know costs, we don't, all we vaguely know is the scope.
No, but if you take the 2.6 million that we say is the cost.
We don't know that to the cost. That's the whole point.
No, 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 no. But, but I'm just saying, you know, you know models.
I know models, and we can put whatever numbers we want into the model, but what's that telling us?
So build a model that says, here's where we got to get to. And I think you'll quickly find out, we can't.
Well, then we do the boathouse and the gate ramp.
Exactly. That's all I'm saying.
Gatehouse and the boat ramp or whatever.
That's what I'm saying.
And we lost nothing but poor Dean's time in developing the GMP.
Okay.
I, I, I am suffering here from a lack of information because I, we don't know what it costs, we don't have a schedule, we have no idea the revenue we're going to lose and the timelines to build anything. All we know are assumptions, and assumptions have gotten us five years later in a badass picture that we can't stomach. Right?
Quick question. Are the rates that we saw earlier the same rates as five years ago? Are they?
Which rates?
So are costs and the rental rates?
Yeah.
Everything is the same as five years? So we're not even looking at real rental rates at this?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
I think they're accurate.
Were they escalated?
Those are current rates. And in the future, I did look at.
Increasing?
Yeah, increasing every five years.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they were still like the same as five years ago and then, but.
Okay.
Because it looks, okay.
Kevin, do you have?
Same with the expense numbers?
No.
Yes, with the expense numbers, there was a CPI built in.
So those numbers that we saw are relatively current.
Right. I mean, there's still, yeah. Yeah. And there's still, you know, like what the cost of the.
There's still not hard numbers that we can really put a pin in, but they're.
They are current estimates as of right now and then escalated, you know, as in the future years.
Okay. Okay.
I think Kevin, do you have a comment?
And going back to, you know, defending what Robert's saying as well, Dean has already assumed this risk and have mentioned that they assume this risk. So even if we move forward with all the things that we have to figure out internally, they're still have mentioned right now that they're assuming the risk that even if we go forward with whatever we need to go forward with, we aren't absorbing any of that cost. They know that, we know that. It's a business decision for them. And if we get to the end of it, we get drawings out of it, we get a, a, almost an accurate projection of what the project would cost moving forward to where if we pull the plug and we have all that information sitting in front of us whether or not we choose to go forward, and they flip the coin for us, and if we go forward with them, great. If not, then they say, hey, thanks for giving us a shot. Correct?
Yes. And I did want to just reiterate, we, we build our business on developing relationships with cities. We have really good relationships with many cities where as soon as they're looking at doing something, they want us to get involved. And that's why we stay busy. We, we would love to develop the relationship with you. So I do know, I appreciate you're looking at it and saying, you know, there is a chance, Dean, this may change the scope of the contract. It happens all the time. We have contracts, we come in and the price, it gets down to wherever the city is. But we're good with that, and we would be happy to do this project with you and develop a relationship with you as a city and develop a good relationship. So for us, that's, that's not a concern on our side.
Oh, I just, so we're, we're looking at really a public works project that does have the benefit of maybe some cabins, but it's, it's a public works project, millions of dollars.
But not in, that's not in this.
The three, wait, the $4 million doesn't include the water and sewer upgrade?
No. That's $3 million on top of that.
Wait a minute. So we're at $7 million.
Seven and a half million.
In total, yes.
Okay.
It started off at 2.6 five years ago, is now seven and a half million.
Well, because we added.
Right. We added.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why you can't move forward without knowing all that.
So we're looking at just three or four million dollars in public work stuff when we have other needs in our city for water and sewer and all these other things that if, I'm just, I'm totally confused now. I, I'm confused, completely confused on what, where the priorities lay. And then you say there's a clock ticking, but what is it ticking on? Like what are we?
Grants.
The grants.
Right. So if we're going on these grants and we say no, or we don't have enough money, I don't want to be hurry up, hurry up, okay, we got to do this now. And I'm feeling like just we're getting rushed. And I'm confused, but that's just me, and I get confused easily.
Just to address one of your points to make sure, with, with everything you looked at tonight, this is with the core properties paying back the water and sewer. It would not be our utility customers, it wouldn't be in the utility fund and taking the place of projects that we could or should be doing around the city.
But we have to take a bond out, right?
City's on the hook for the bonds.
Yes, yes.
And a bond affects everybody in the city. And we take bonds out to fix our residences' stuff, and we take a bond out for this. So I guess maybe I misunderstood, but we're still, that's a, I mean, how many roads can we do water, sewer, and storm for $4 million? So I just don't want to be in a position where, okay, clock's ticking, we're going to lose all this money, let's go. Right? And that's where I'm feeling like we're heading. There's so many unknowns. Maybe that has nothing to do with C Mar, but I'm, it's overwhelmingly like boom, boom, boom. Oh, by the way, we need to approve this. That's where I'm at.
But I, and I think though, tonight, it is, help me understand, and we can change this, it is just the C Mar to get numbers to look at. And then at that point, we can say, yes, no, or maybe. Am I correct? Somebody tell me that, you know, I mean, like, just because we approve this, that gives them, Dean, will go out and start looking at scope and putting all the numbers together, and then they're going to come back to us and we're going to say, there is no way. I mean, we can't do it this way. So we can do it this way, or we're not going to do it at all. But what are we out at that point?
Correct. Well, with the pre-design services not having a fee, essentially, yeah, if the plug is pulled, then it's done.
So we're not at anything at that point. But then we look at the, the whole, the scope of everything and decide, we can't do cabins, but we can do the boat ramp and the gatehouse, and we move forward with that. And then at that point, then we're, we're on the hook for.
The approved items.
Exactly.
Yeah. And if I can speak about the grant, I did have a conversation with Texas Parks and Wildlife saying, you know, if the cabins aren't, aren't built because of the way that construction costs have escalated and other things in the project have changed, is there opportunities to redirect funds in other places in the park? And they said, yes, we would work with you on that. So it may be, I don't know if we would get, you know, how much that is, that's yet to be determined of the $750,000. It may be 500,000 of it, but it's still grant money that can be used.
And I, I agree, Rhonda. And I, I agree, Rhonda, I'm, I'm with you on, I don't want to be hurried on this. This is something that we really need to look at. And, and yeah, it's been five years, unfortunately, but until we have all of those numbers, we're not going to be able to really.
No, you're right.
Make a, make a decision at all. I mean, seriously, we might as well just pull the plug because on, on everything until, because without those actual numbers, we can't, we can't make a decision and we're not going to get those numbers unless we hire somebody to do that.
Back to the numbers, okay. So in order to do this 4 point whatever million project, we still need the 3 point something million dollars, correct? So is all of that being lumped in together? Because it makes no sense to have this siloed and this siloed, right? So we're really looking at $7 million. Is that what I'm getting?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half million.
Every time.
I don't want to be stickler gum.
Are we going to marry this all together? Because if we have this working out here and this don't work, but this isn't communicating, then we're right back where we started.
Well, I think, and help, and please speak to this. We've got, John, help me with the numbers, 4 million and 3 and a half million. Part of it is water and sewer. If we do the cabins, water and sewer has to be done.
Right.
We can't do, we can't build the cabins unless we do water and sewer, okay? We don't have to do water and sewer. If we decide not to do the cabins, we don't have to do water and sewer to do the gatehouse, am I correct? And the boat ramp.
I believe so. The, not the boat ramp, but the, the gatehouse, because it's an old system, I'm not that familiar with if we, if we redo the gatehouse and we just attach to the existing septic system, if they're going to require us to change out the whole septic system. So those conversations haven't happened yet.
But will those conversations, hang on a second.
Yes.
I'm, I'm looking up here. So it says water and sewer updates, no cabins. We lose 150,000 a year, okay?
That's at the 4 million though. That's at the 4 million.
No, that's not part of the 4, 4 million.
No, I mean, that's if we spend the 4 million to update the water.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, that's 3, 3.2 million just for updating water and sewer. Nothing for cabins, okay? If we just do water, okay, and say we'll limp along on the sewer, okay, that's going to be 1.2 million, okay? So, and then not knowing whether we can hook in, I mean, who would make that determination?
Well, that's what my question was, was that going to be, would that be a question that they would be able to answer when they come back?
Or does the Corps answer that?
I don't know.
Oh, that's, I believe that's international building code that dictates that.
What, septic?
Yeah.
OSFF, your, oh, your onsite sanitary sewer facility guy, I think his name's Leslie in Denton County, he's the guy. But I think we need to look at updating our OSSFF, OSSF overbuilding two lift stations. That's a lot because our, the new thing has two lift stations that lift it to a new something. I don't know, I am just, now we're at $7.5 million and I, I, I do see the benefit of the C Mar. However, I don't even see where our project's at right now, at $7.5 million, to be honest. That's a lot of money.
It doesn't matter if it's at 7.5 million or 700,000. All we're bringing on today is Dean Construction to make us smarter on what that price can be, right? At zero risk to the city at this point, since their pre-construction services are free, right? That's a follow-up question, don't let me forget that, Kevin. That'll be to you. But whether, whether we spend 7 million or 700,000 for the boathouse and the ramp, right? We can't make any of these decisions without a good number and how are we going to get that number? We can all grab it out of the air or we can ask Dean to give it to us, right? And then the council makes a decision three months from now, we pull the plug and everything and we, we're out nothing except three months, right? But we at least we know.
Three months.
But I, I'm just saying, I don't, I'm, I'm struggling to see the, the risk for the city at this point if we're obligating ourselves. All we're obligating ourselves is bringing on Dean at 12%, right? Whether we end up spending 700,000 or 7 million, right? We're obligating to bait Dean 12% of that.
If we go through with the project.
If we go through with anything. And if we go through with nothing, then, you know, we'll buy him a case of beer or something. You know, I don't know, but.
But, but also they, they can't do that without looking at the 7.5 million dollars for the projects.
Great.
Because they'll go hand in glove. No, but that's, right now, that's Scott's team, okay, that has put together all that.
So why can't we just make the resolution one sentence? The C Mar for this project will be 12%, period, end of. Can't we just do one sentence?
Well, that was my point an hour ago.
I've already rewritten it.
An A sentence? I mean, I'm just saying, because there's all this blah, 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 blah in it.
No, it's, it's, it's going to be based on, I mean, let me get it back up in front of me.
And while you're looking for that, Kevin, Kevin.
So it was brought up earlier, if, if this goes through tonight, six weeks to get to 95 or 100%?
No.
There's no way you can get from 60 to 95. If you get that in six weeks.
Look at 60, maybe, but.
We'll be spending Dunaway more money to draw plans.
Yeah, it's the, really, we would give them the plans that are done today, you know, at 60%.
You shouldn't spend another penny on it.
And we just, we, we would pass those on to Dean. So it would be the, the, the time amount to, to, to make the.
So that would give us plenty of time to go through, review what we have set up from a budget standpoint, from a projection standpoint and everything else that will go into this project while they are on the other side getting plans ready and giving us a more accurate read of what the material costs and what the fees would be, what the labor would be. And then on our end, we're collecting the data that we need and, and pushing those numbers forward. So by the time they come back, we already essentially preemptively have an answer of what direction we're going to go into.
So we're going to hold the line at 60, is that what you're saying, percent? Are you going to move forward?
No, no percentage. I'm, I'm.
Plans. Are we going to hold at 60% and say Dunaway pencils down?
For this exercise, yeah.
That would be our plan to, to work with Dean with what we have. We have plenty to, to get that information.
Yeah, and that would be our plan too.
To hold the line at 60, then revisit it, then we can tell y'all, because I don't want to be spending engineering fees on 95% plans if we're stuck at 60 and we're at 7 million and we got nothing.
Yeah.
And that's a beautiful thing about this C Mar process is the fact that you can't stop it right there. Just, okay, it's not working. And, and just to let you know, the gatehouse is at 100%.
Which is fine.
Yep, just, just want to make sure that you know that, not everything is at 60.
The stuff that's done, but right now, I don't know.
The gatehouse, the day use area, the boat ramp are at 60%.
Do we send out a RFP with no plans? It's amazing.
So a typical C Mar process would not have plans. So, so typically, you, yeah, you would, you would start at the very beginning. And, and so while this original project was going to be design bid build, that's why the plans are as far along. Even the, the, the gatehouse was done to 100%. So this is actually an accelerated C Mar process in the sense that they already have or will have 60% drawings and can get to that, much closer to that GMP even quicker. So a typical C Mar process would be starting at 0%.
Okay, all right, I think, Robert, you have another question?
Yes, and this is for Kevin. It's going to sound funny, but I'm a little weary, leary, you decide.
And weary, and weary.
On accepting free services by a contractor if we decide not to move forward. So is it possible or is it something we need to consider that we pay Dean a nominal fee or something if we choose not to move forward as a remuneration of their services?
Well, you, you heard them say sometimes cities will make them do that. We can certainly put $100 or $1,000 in the pre-construction phase.
Is there something that prohibits us from free services from contractors?
We can do that. I mean, we can add, again, we haven't actually drafted the full C Mar contract. In fact, we haven't even started drafting the contract itself yet. So we can, we can certainly put that in there or we can say it's zero. But yes, we can put, you know, if we need to put $1,000 in there, you know, to make sure it's, you know, you don't have a problem with, I mean, I.
That's fine, I'll leave it up to you all.
That's fine.
I'm a little weary about accepting free stuff from a contractor for, you know, if we decide not to go forward.
Free services, not free stuff, free services.
Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can certainly put that in the contract.
Okay, and then you were looking something up?
Yeah, no, I was just getting, I redrafted the resolution. I don't know if, you know, Angie Mayer, did you get a chance to print it out?
Yes.
Okay.
Section one that you made the change on?
Yes, ma'am. So.
Section one is.
Yeah, so actually, the way I've rewritten the last line or two of the section one is to say with the construction manager contractor fees not exceeding 3.5% on construction phase fees and not exceeding 3, 8.5% on general condition fees, on the general condition fees. And that's, that is consistent with the proposal they submitted in, you know, pursuant to our request for proposals.
And the discussion that we had. So are there any more questions, council, comments?
So it took all the money out? Okay, I read it.
It's just a percentage.
I'm good with that.
You want to, y'all want to see it on this end?
Whatever we decide to do, we obligating ourselves to go with Dean, right?
I think that's fair. Putting all these fairy numbers in is just confusing in my, and I love numbers. I'm a math nerd, love them.
Yeah, I want real numbers though, that's.
Yes, I don't do imaginary numbers, why I'm not an accountant.
Well, I want to be able to get the real numbers and then make real decisions based on the real numbers. And that's the way, okay. All right, well, if there's not any, you want to, you want to read that?
Sure, I read it. You want me to make the resolution or?
You want to make the motion?
Okay, Angie has a flag on the play.
So are y'all down moving from position where we're at session item one to the action item?
Yeah, because I read action, the whole action item when we first.
Actually, they've been under the action item the whole time.
The whole time. We just did, we did the whole discussion under that item. So, and should I read the section one that you changed? Just so it's on.
Well, I mean, I've read it. I'm, I've read it, if you want to say as, you know, revised by the city attorney during this meeting, you know, be the motion, you know, basically, basically say if, if the motion is to approve resolution 2025-319 as revised by the city attorney during this meeting and presented.
Okay, I'm not making a motion.
That would be the motion. If, if everybody's agreeable about.
Okay, so back to, we're at a consider resolution 2025-3190, authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute a construction manager at-risk contract with guaranteed maximum price with Dean Electric, Inc., DBA Dean Construction relating to Pilot Knoll Park Improvement Projects with the updated verbiage from attorney, from our attorney under section one. Do I have a motion? Council, y'all want, let me read what this says so that everybody, because I want it on the record. So here's the, it is now, it does now say, section one, city managers hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a construction manager at-risk contract with guaranteed maximum price for construction of the Pilot Knoll Park Improvement Project with Dean Electric, Inc., DBA Dean Construction with the construction manager's contract fee not exceeding 3.5% on construction phase fee and not exceeding 8.5% on the general condition fee. That is the, that is the resolution. Council, do I have, have a motion? Oh, yes.
I think a motion we approve is read.
Thank you. And do I have a second? I think Sean, second. All right, so we have a motion and Sean did the second. We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and it carries 7-0. Thank you. All right. So now we're going to move into, and thank y'all, all of y'all for being here, late work session, we're going to get an update on the Highland Shores Boulevard reconstruction project design. Mr. Kristin.
You read that fast? Everybody take a breath.
It's almost my bedtime.
It's almost the mayor's bedtime, yeah. I'll try to hurry. Thank you, Mayor, council. So, little history, since everybody was not sitting, I don't think anybody was sitting on council in 2014, maybe the mayor might have been a council person.
Well, I was mayor in 2014, I became mayor in 2014.
In 2014, the city commissioned Kimley Horn Engineering Company to perform a traffic and sign study along Highland Shores Boulevard. It went, the, the study consisted of looking at every intersection that had a four-way stop to either be signalized or warrant the existing four-way stops that are there now. And when I say warrant, signals have warrants that engineers use, you know, some of them are traffic volume, pedestrian volume, school crossings, crash history, nearby grade crossings, and then for stop sign warrants, again, traffic volume, crash history, high pedestrian traffic and inadequate site distances. So with that study, it was determined that there's about 6,500 to 7,500 vehicles traveling on Highland Shores daily. It really hasn't changed that much because there's been no additional development in the area. None of the intersections warranted, it came even close to warranting for a signal. And I believe the request for a signal was at the Timbercrest Highland Shores intersection at that particular point in time and it, it didn't meet, it was way low. So the other thing they found out, which, you know, when you open Pandora's box, you get what you get, they, they looked at all the four-way stops, all the way up down through the corridor being Briar Hill, Timbercrest, Hillside, Twin Coves and Creek Haven. And believe it or not, none of those even came close to warranting a four-way stop. Twin Coves came close with a site distance, but it didn't quite make it. However, everything has remained since with, with no questions asked. So moving forward in time, the road itself started to deteriorate. It's deteriorating exponentially now. It's, it, there's a section in there that's, that's very bad. We did rebuild the asphalt section and since then we have overlaid it and redid our, our pavement striping scheme. We did add to our CIP to reconstruct sections of Highland Shores Boulevard in our 2021 CIP. At that same time, Denton County was putting together a CIP and we added two projects in the city to their voter CIP that they were putting together. That vote passed, I guess it was a bond election, right, Kevin? That bond election did pass in the Denton County, which included our two projects. So we commissioned our engineering consultants to perform a, a mobility study on Highland Shores Boulevard. Now I think everybody here either knows about it or has been part of the, the political environment since then. Staff made several presentations to council for this mobility study. And what we did was split Highland Shores Boulevard, the entire length from Highland Village Road to Fonda Market 2499, we split it into three sections. The blue section is the asphalt section, purple section is the midsection that is, that is deteriorating, end of life, and the green section is, we could still get by with that with some maintenance as we move forward in the future. Again, we staff presented council with three options. I like to call it the, I think I called it the platinum package, the gold package and the as-is package. Back in late '22, we received a little bit of direction from council to go with the gold package. So we put together a gold package and brought it to council in February '23 and got direction from council to repair payment edge drop-offs, adding a roundabout at Hillside, vehicle lane narrowing as there is a perceived speeding perception, widening the bike lanes. There's a lot of people that like to exercise on, on Highland Shores Boulevard. Adding a dedicated turn lane, a left turn lane onto Lakeside Drive where there is none now. And adding a dedicated turn lane into the DKH Academy on Briar Hill Boulevard. We also going to reduce the amount of intersection crosswalks. A lot of these crosswalks are crosswalks to nowhere, grass to grass, it's just, it's, it's not ADA compliant, so they need to be removed. Improving visibility, there's a lot of bushes in these intersections, sightlines are not met, there's a lot of large trees where sightlines are difficult to, to obtain. Maintaining, well, getting, there's a lot of trip hazards on the existing sidewalks, they're there. Most of the sidewalk that runs parallel along Highland Shores Boulevard is HOA owned and maintained, they constructed it, the city did not. They have a lot of tripping hazards, doesn't meet, none of the crosswalks meet ADA. And then moving on to the actual cross-section of paving, the vehicle alignment, getting a, a typical cross-section that, that is consistent throughout the whole corridor. Highland Shores Boulevard was constructed as Highland Shores subdivision was developed. So there was a, you know, there's a piece constructed with 1A, there was a piece constructed with 3B, there's, and so on and so forth, all the way through 17C. We're proposing to take the right-of-way widths, there's different right-of-way widths up and down the corridor, making it one right-of-way width, which is, which is not that difficult as Highland Shores owns a sliver of Greenbelt on, on, on the either side of the, of the existing roadway. And Highland Shores is great to work with, they'll, they'll give it to us, no questions asked. Matter of fact, we've already talked to them about it. We do have groundwater issues in the area that the geotechnical report revealed, so there is recommendations for that. And saying that, in our last street bond, we did have identified a drainage project in there that we would build in conjunction with this road project. It would be one of the first things constructed. So that's what happens, is not what is happening now, that is a wastewater project that they're, that they just finished up. So next council meeting, I anticipate bringing forward the engineering contract. So, next council meeting, I anticipate bringing forward the engineering contract for this drainage project that we can design as recommended by the geotech report. And we also have construction money identified in the CIP, and it's funded by the last bond. We're going to remediate the groundwater issues and address the subgrade in the pavement failures all along the corridor. Tech Dot considers two of the culvert crossings as bridges, so they come out biannual and do inspections on those culvert crossings, and they have identified some issues that need to be addressed. So we'll address those as part of this project. And then, again, improving the drainage system in the area. That being said, I brought pictures. We're in the 70-ish, 75% drawing phase. And so I wanted to share that with you and see if you wanted to make any adjustments, revisions. This is probably the last time that we can make any kind of revisions, direction from council, and not affect any additional engineering fees. So this is the Briar Hill intersection. East is to your right. West is to your left. We would carry the new road through the intersection, couple hundred feet to the east, and start with a concrete pavement section. This is the area that we discussed a flyby. So westbound traffic on Highland Shores Boulevard would no longer stop. The left turning movement on to Briar Hill would stop. The right turning movement on to Briar Hill would stop. There would still be a three-way stop. Westbound Highland Shores would not stop. Yes, sir?
The current speed limit is 30, correct?
Current speed limit on Highland Shores is 30.
Are we looking at increasing that with these changes?
We will not.
Perfect.
We will narrow the lanes, just like we did in the asphalt pavement section, and basically mimic, mirror the pavement marking, the bike lanes, the travel lanes, to a minimum seven-foot wide bike lane, 11-foot wide vehicular lane. One of the good things we're doing is we're adding a sidewalk. We're either adding or replacing sidewalk on both sides of the road. So we are, there's an existing sidewalk on the south side, which is the blue, and then on the north side, we're adding that sidewalk. So you'll have pedestrian sidewalk on both north and south side, as well as a dedicated bike lane in the paving cross-section.
The shaded section to the west of the intersection, is that the new crosswalk?
I think it's a culvert.
Or is that the culvert?
That?
Yes.
That's those.
That's a bridge.
So it's brick paper.
That's that brick papers on the bridge?
Yeah.
Where's the, is there going to be a cross over this location? Crosswalk?
Where's the crosswalk going to be?
Yeah.
There's one right here. And there's one right here. The blue hash mark?
It will remain.
We're actually adding one, yeah. This is going to be added.
My concern is on the flyby.
Yeah, it's marked there.
Right. You've got a flyby, they're not looking at stopping, and then you've got a crosswalk in the middle of it. So I'm concerned about safety issues for people at that intersection.
I'm with Brian. Crosswalks are where you have stop signs?
We don't have a stop sign at Community Center Drive on Highland Shores, and there is a crosswalk there. If we have to, you know, look at putting an enhancement there, we can look at that or we can take it out. This is the direction we're looking for now.
That's a busy, I mean, that's a busy, community drivers in as busy as Briar Hill.
There's not, there's not one there now. There are people that cross, but very few.
There's kids that cross there, yeah.
Yeah.
School's on. There's like four crossings a day coming north, you know, north, south across Highland Shores Boulevard to Briar Hill. A lot going east-west.
Right.
So, yeah.
Take it out, because if it's kids.
Take the crossing out.
Yeah. We're talking kids, they ain't paying attention anyway.
Well, if it's not there, then they're not going to start using it. The people that use it now are going to take the chance anyway, so.
Right.
Isn't there a crossing further east of Briar Hill?
There's one at the community center.
Beyond that? If you go further east after the stop sign at Briar Hill? I thought there was a crossing without a stop sign there.
At the community center, yes.
East is the community center. West would be crosswalk at Timbercrest.
Correct.
The one the community center already has, well, they haven't updated.
Okay, hang on. You're talking community center.
At Community Center Drive, it has enhancement, lighting enhancements.
But if you keep going, is it there? I thought there was another one down by Rainy. Is there not after Rainy to get across to the courts or like right before Rainy? I thought there were two crosswalks that didn't have stop signs. I could be mistaken, but I thought.
No, I don't, there's not another one.
We took it out.
Okay.
You're correct, there was one that, there was striped at Rainy.
Yeah.
But it was a non-ADA compliant, and it was a crosswalk to nowhere, so we took it out.
Okay.
All right. We'll take that crosswalk out.
Yeah, you're just asking for trouble with kids.
Well, it's no different than the one on 2499. Right there by Village Park.
Not going there.
And there you got cars doing 50. Can we take that one out? Sorry, that's a death threat, you know.
Different project.
Different project.
I'll bring something forward. Moving west up to Hillside in Highland Shores, this would be the pool number two, Lakeside. So we are adding a turn lane, dedicated turn lane on to Hillside. We're going to cut that median and stop this U-turn at this site. The crosswalk remains there. It is not a stop sign intersection.
Ooh, with the, with the traffic circle or roundabout or whatever you want to call it these days, and that's going to be fun. I mean pedestrians, have you seen them navigate these? It's like Frogger.
We'll move east. Okay, so coming into the roundabout, you do, you direct bike traffic and pedestrian walking traffic on to an eight or 10-foot wide paving section. Then you cross from here, and basically the same thing here. And then you can put the bike lane back out into the paving section, and you still have your crossing here. So you don't cross in the roundabout, you cross outside of a roundabout.
In theory, you are correct. I transverse three roundabouts on John McCain going to church. It's just, to this day, no one has learned how to drive. Just, again, that's my thing. I'll get off my roundabout soapbox.
So is there, is there, I know there's a drive into the parking lot for the pool to the west, that one. Is there, since we're making a cut in the median for Lakeside, is it necessary to retain that opening?
You know, we were, we were going to close it originally, and then when we laid out the roundabout, you have a median here that has to be there. So now you can't make that.
Extending on Hillside past that entrance?
You can't make that left turn movement out of there.
Yeah.
You would make them go around.
Okay.
Sideways to get back over here. So with, with the dedicated turn lane here, it's going to eliminate that U-turn.
Right.
So we decided to go ahead and leave that.
Right.
As a left turn option, a westbound option.
Okay.
What's playing for the middle of the roundabout?
That's a good question.
If anything has to cut it, like a fire engine has to cut it, or, you know, is it going to be brickwork? Is it going to be?
Oh, it's wide enough for a fire engine.
It has a roll curve too on the inside.
I mean, I've seen the videos of people that, you know, speed.
The initial discussion we had, I believe, was to move that fountain to the middle.
We're going to move, yes, we're going to move the fountain here into here.
Okay.
But we found a way to keep it there. And then we had an idea, which I haven't brought to Paul yet, but now we're going to discuss it apparently.
Real quick, when we say it's big enough for a fire truck, is it big enough for a bigger fire truck than we currently have?
Yes.
Okay.
It's big enough for the ladder trucks that.
We don't need ladder trucks.
Lewisville.
You do not need ladder trucks. We've had that discussion.
I defer that to, if you agree.
So, really haven't discussed it with Paul yet or anybody, but I've been floating around ideas to put some sort of a Highland Village feature in there. You know, would that be?
A statue of Mayor Waukesha.
That'd be, yeah, statue of the mayor.
With their hand going in the direction.
You know, if we could just rotate, and just rotate, and I could just wave.
You know, we got a, we got a positive art community. You know, could there be something in there, you know, from them? We could, we could do like a little RFP and have them dedicate something, or we could put something, there's nothing in the Highland Shores area or that corridor that identifies Highland Village as Highland Village.
Why don't we just put the Highland Village Monument?
Like, so that people can hit it like they come off of 35 and hit that. And that's what'll happen in this thing. They're going to just knock it down, and we're going to be out there replacing it.
Can't we just put bushes or plants? Like, can't we just do pansies and like replace them with plants? So it's, ooh, I got one. Can't we do like colorful plantings in the Highland Village logo? Then they can run over it and no one's going to get hurt.
But we have to go back out and replant.
That's true.
Scott, the purple line or the blue lines are curbs, right? I'll call them purple, I guess.
Purple's bluish, edge of pavement, yeah.
But it's a raised curb? So the bike lane through the roundabout, it's at grade with the road, then it pops a curb, if you will?
Well, it'll be, it'll be an ADA.
It'll, a little ramp?
Ramp, yeah.
Okay. And then on the other side as well, both sides, I guess, yeah.
Yeah. Nah, we won't make them jump the curb.
Well, I just wasn't sure how that would, yeah. At speed, how they were going to navigate that.
You've got the sidewalks here. The sidewalk on the south side, and you mentioned this earlier, that was put in by the HOA, and they maintain that particular sidewalk now. Is that owned by the HOA? Was that dedicated to the city? And it's our, I know it's in our, is it in our easement?
Yeah, most of the sidewalk is in the, is in the green belt area. So we would, we would seek pedestrian easement unless it gets incorporated with the right-of-way that we're seeking. Some of the areas, we have to seek 10-foot additional right-of-way.
So the idea here is to take ownership of the sidewalk?
Sure.
Rather than leaving it for HOA?
They're not maintaining it?
No, I know.
Yes, we would, we would take ownership and have it as an asset.
Okay.
So nothing on here will be the responsibility of the HOA?
HOA currently does the landscaping, and we would, we would still have them do the landscaping.
Even in the roundabout? Or would that be us?
Yeah, if you wanted a roundabout landscaped, we'd, we'd put irrigation into it and.
But wouldn't we have to make, give that, give it a lot and block to make the HOA maintain it, since it's in public right-of-way?
They maintain everything now.
Well, they don't the sidewalks.
They have, they have 60 green belt meters. We'd make it a green belt. So yes, in essence, yes, we would, we would name it a green belt.
So, section one's a rural section, barditch. Section two's curb and gutter, urban, and section three's back to rural, barditch.
Eventually, it'll be, it'll be reconstructed into, into this type of section.
So section one was just reconstructed, right? It'll stay barditch, correct?
Blue section?
Yeah. Didn't we just do blue section?
It'll always remain asphalt, barditch. And that's what those, those subdivisions are taxed on, unless you want me to rebuild it as a concrete cross-section.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just.
Because they will be assessed additional upgrades.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Urban drainage to rural drainage is a increase in your taxes. Denton County taxes.
Interesting. I don't want to make my taxes go down too. Okay, I was just wondering, because urban, yeah. And so this has better conditions to put curb and gutter, because you need more depth and stuff. Okay.
Now this, we took out one crosswalk. There's already an existing sidewalk leading up to this, and there's an existing crosswalk here, and it is not a stop intersection. You want me to keep that, or you want me to take it out?
Ooh, that's.
Is there a dedicated left turn lane eastbound? Right there?
Yes.
I'd say leave it, they're going to have to stop anyway.
Well, there's a, there's a sidewalk that comes into that intersection, right? So a person could assume that there would be a crosswalk.
Correct.
So can we do the fancy?
There's a crosswalk there now.
The fancy lighty thingy to let them know, since there's not a stop sign, and I know that's so technical, but the, what is it called? Enhanced?
Enhanced lighting system?
Yes.
Ching ching.
Everything costs money.
Oh, I get that, but I'm also, if we're going to, if we're going to make it.
Well, then I want one on Village Parkway.
Done. That's a state right-of-way, you have to petition your state senator.
Well, if we don't get one, nobody's going to get one.
I'll give you his phone number.
I'm sorry.
No, I just, because the nature and the type of road is changing, I think safety should be our utmost concern, and where we, if we don't have stop conditions, we should have something more than just stripes. That's.
So relative to safety, then, in this particular one?
You want enhanced in all these?
The roundabout, no, because you, they have to slow down. Nobody's speeding through those.
There'll be a recommended slow, it'll be a black on yellow, speed limit of probably 15 to 20, we hadn't, we hadn't.
Typically, you don't do that on roundabouts. But where there's already one connecting across, it's like, oh yeah, I'm just going to keep on going. That's what I'm saying, that we're already directing them, they're used to going that way. We should at least do a little something more than a stripe.
Let's talk a little bit more about the safety issue with the roundabout. We're looking at going from stop signs to a roundabout at this intersection, right?
Right.
That will allow continual traffic. Slower pace around there. There's no stopping, so the flow is a little bit better. What are the actual safety numbers relative to a roundabout?
Studies that I've seen show up to a 74% safety increase in a roundabout. It, it does provide continuous movement. It takes away a 90-degree angle T-bone accident. It takes away running a stop sign accident, running a signal accident. It enhances response time for fire and police, because even, I've heard it 100 times, you know, their policy for, for going to a call in our city is they do stop at every, every stop sign. So that would increase their response times by how much? I don't know.
But overall, the decrease in traffic accidents in a roundabout?
Well, it decreases major traffic accidents. It increases.
They don't go away.
It increases.
No, I understand, it won't go away, absolutely.
It increases slow bump, it increases bumping into each other. So it gets rid of the, I'm, they're going to die.
High-impact accidents are gone.
It increases, I don't know what the heck I'm doing, I'm bumping into my neighbor crashes that don't really hurt you.
But it's a single lane, it's not a double lane.
Yeah.
And nobody knows what to do.
No. We are not your man.
We'll all have to go take a drive through Highland Oaks.
Learning curve.
Got two roundabouts.
We need those rumble things in the pavement as you're approaching, you know, where it goes.
They've got two.
Put those on Greensboro Road, and it goes pretty well, so.
To have people start slowing down, because.
Down towards the end at Duval.
Well, those are too small.
We'll put some rumble strips right there.
Please.
Second or third house up, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
But overall, the, the safety improvement is there. The, the safety issue is.
Studies have shown that they, they increase safety significantly.
Yeah.
I haven't seen those studies.
Death accidents are reduced to next to nothing.
I mean, we don't have any, really? I mean, when we did our last track, we don't have death accidents really here, but.
Last time police chief was up here, there's no accidents at this intersection.
But you are going to get neighbors bumping into neighbors, and they will let you know how much they enjoy it.
The reason we put these, if you remember, or you may not remember, we had a roundabout at every intersection. That was the platinum package. All of them got taken out except for this one. And it was to get rid of the unwarranted stop signs is what it is. So we kept this one, and that's what it's for. we kept this one, and that's what it's for. So, we are far enough along in the design process, as you can see here, but we're, we're back far enough in the design process, if we wanted to take it out and just put a reg, the as-is four-way stop in there, we can do that now at no, no costs, no additional engineering cost.
I would leave it, because you can turn that into a nice focal element for that whole corridor, I mean, if you take care of it and enhancement, enhance it with some, you know, colorful plantings or something, so.
Leave it.
I don't, people will figure out how to do a roundabout if they've never done it before.
Well, y'all were, I, I didn't...
Just go to Target and figure it out.
In this discussion, I want that on the record, I did not participate in this discussion before, because I wasn't here, but, I mean, what, obviously council wanted it.
That was a directive, at council at that time.
They were smart enough to not put three of them in.
Yes.
I wanted three.
Frisco's taking out the roundabouts because they were so successful.
There's, there's no additional right-of-way that would have to be taken on those, on the corners, then? We've got enough that we can insert this roundabout?
Right now, we think we can encroach onto the pool HOA property and just get some additional right-of-way from them.
Okay.
Not affecting...
The homeowners on the corners?
Residential property here, here, or here.
Okay.
What's that gonna do to the lemonade stands, they're up there on every...
Put them in the middle, so then it's a parking lot as you go around it.
They'll be in the middle?
Yes.
No.
Yeah?
The statue's...
Perfect location.
They'll have to move the lemonade stands over here, or down in here somewhere, I guess.
I love those lemonade stands.
We should totally add a city lemonade stand somewhere on this route.
So I'm hearing enhanced lit crossing here?
Yes.
Needs to be something.
Yeah, because you're already directing them, I mean, you have a chute saying go across.
Does that only give you two total on Highland Shores, correct, if that one was added?
That will be two.
Well, we just took one away, right?
No, we talked about...
Two enhanced crossings.
Oh, okay.
Project Limits is gonna be Hillside-Twin Coves intersection, which really doesn't change much. We tie it back into existing paving here, we are looking at taking the existing paving marks, traffic lanes and bike lanes from this point to 2499, and see if we can achieve an economy of scale with the, with the paving marking contractor, Sam Lasso is off, and, and just keep this same paving striping all the way to the 2499. Intersection. Unless you want me to add a roundabout here?
No, I, I am going on record that I am anti-roundabout.
Now, this will still be a stop sign intersection, so you will have crosswalks here, we'll stop the sidewalk here, and sometime in the future, we'll bring a project forward to continue sidewalk. But there'll still be a sidewalk on the, the south side, existing. So, our opinion, probable construction costs, when we submitted it to Denton County, it was in the $9 million range, that was in '21, we've added a 20% contingency to bring it to 10.8, being inflation and materials cost over the past four years. Denton County bond is proposed to pick up 50%, I don't know if they'll pick up the additional estimated costs that we're proposing, but they've got money sitting in the bank that's been drawing interest, so we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to try to get, make up that cost.
And what's the return on this roadway improvement?
The return on the roadway?
IRR, this one?
ROI, return on investment.
Zero.
I give you a brand-new concrete roadway that should outlast me by, you know, 30 years.
We will probably get emails, kind of like the garbage service, for the first few months.
We know you will.
So, Scott...
Now, this is just information, go ahead.
I, I don't wanna gloss over the last thing you said, so, when we submitted it to the county, it was nine-something million, and at that time, it was 50%, so let's say four and a half million, so if it's now 11 million, I know you said maybe they'll pick up the difference, so that 50, or 50 of the difference, if they don't, we're tech, we're on the hook for the escalated cost, right?
This all has to be done in a bond package, so we are working with finance now to put together the bond package in the September timeframe, and 10.8 is what is submitted for that.
That's for the city bond, right, not the county's bond, okay. So there's still a potential gap on what we originally thought we'd pay versus where we're at today.
Yeah.
But we're gonna hope on the interest it draws makes up the difference.
But they, we have to also hope that they give that to us, right?
And was it projected start date?
Yeah, that's what I was...
We could potentially move to the construction phase late this year, 1st of '26.
And how long do you project, you think this'll take to do?
I knew you were gonna ask.
144 days.
Five months?
144. So Heather, we've been making interest on that money sitting in the bank, right? On the, on the bond money, I mean, we've been able to keep some percentage of that, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so there's probably a half million sitting there.
No, no, the bonds for our chair, we will, we will start the process of issuing those in September, so that'll be before council, but would that be the first or second meeting in September, Heather?
Can you fund it? I think it's maybe, it's maybe in October.
Okay, October, okay.
October.
Yeah, yeah, and I had played phone tag with a consultant with Denton County to find out about the cost overruns, if, if they are with the interest of earning, and everybody's costs are going up.
We're not the only...
If they are allocating that, so I'll, that's a question I will ask as soon as we can make contact with each other.
Okay.
The anticipated start January, let's say, right? It's gonna take how long?
144 days.
Year and a half.
No, you're close.
Year and a half?
It's a year and a half, two-year project.
To get the entire thing done.
Yeah. If we get the drainage project going, anything underground needs to go first before you start working on the subgrade paving, you, we could see some dirt moving again in that same area where we just did the wastewater project in December.
So, okay, so the, the actual disruption to flow could be later in the first quarter, because you're gonna have to do your, you're gonna have to do your, there's not gonna be a road that we can't travel on, you have to move traffic back and forth. My concern, overall, looking at the big picture, is we also have the 2499-407 project starting at the same time.
Well, it'll be long done, then.
But, I know, and that's, minimally, if, if that's a 144-day project, this is a year and a half, and that's what I'm trying to get to.
Got a 2499 and 407.
They're starting next week.
Move around, and I'm just trying to get an idea here.
Should be any overlap.
They're starting next week, so they should be finishing up in, into November-ish.
And what's the over-under on that, their pool somewhere?
Text out, six years.
So we don't anticipate any crossover? My concern is people coming off of 407 and reusing this as a bypass.
Right.
Oh, they will.
There'll be some...
Sure they will, and that's, I don't want these construction projects to be at the same time, you've gridlocked the entire community at that point.
And it all depends, you know, we, when we bid it, if we see that they're still under construction, we can hold back.
Right, yeah, okay.
If we gotta hold back a month, then, you know, we hold back a month, but this road project is gonna be roughly two years.
Okay.
We will have a traffic control plan with it, so there'll always be two lanes of traffic, we'll just, we'll build half, whether it be the north half or the southern half, and put two-way traffic on one side, and then flip-flop them once we get everything over, and it'll be, the very last thing that'll be done is the striping, so, you know, we'll have temporary striping and vertical delineators in place for traffic control.
All right.
Somebody else have any questions?
Yeah, no, just the half and half will be interesting with a roundabout, but I'm not a engineer, so.
This is just information only tonight, because we have seen some social media posts regarding roundabouts, so we wanted to bring it back and kinda give an update.
Didn't actually set up a test roundabout, because they got so many emails in their parking lot, to show people how to use them. Yeah.
Might have to happen here.
That's why we have flower round.
Well, we have two existing, in line, Councilman Feacher said they can go behind Target, or they can go on Chin Chapel.
Right.
And there's two of them right down on Chin Chapel Road that a lot of our people go through, right behind Target and going into Double Lock, so...
They're dangerous. He knows what they're doing, again, I say, no one knows what they're doing, and those, I go through that, and you never know if it's your turn or not, and you just, you just...
That's why slow crash incidents increase.
It's yield.
It's, it's a yield?
Well, no, if there's someone in there, you yield, that's the way roundabouts work.
They'll be signed correctly.
We're gonna have to get a lesson, yes, okay, thank you.
And Mayor, of course, the other project related to Denton County bonds is the section of Highland Shores Boulevard from Brazos to the railroad tracks, so...
Highland Village Road.
Highland Village Road?
Highland Village Road, I'm sorry, Highland Village Road from Brazos to the railroad tracks, so that'll be coming up in the future.
Right, that's in design now, too.
All right, well, thank you, anything else? Council, status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items, does anyone have any, yes ma'am?
Number one, I'd like to see if we could put a QR code out on 2499, like they have in other cities, so people can, when they're stopped at the stoplight forever, can see the status, it takes them to a page so they can see how long it'll take, or around town, I don't know if we can do that or not, I know other cities do it when they have construction projects, you just scan the code, and it brings you to what's going on. I would also like to request a workshop on the A to Z's of this Pilot Knoll Park that has everything to unconfuse the confused, and go back to 2005 years ago, what we're looking at, how the water sewer and the, what we're looking at all marries together, and, and step by step, to, on that, and then lastly, I would like to have a item in the future, to have the council discuss possibly passing a resolution to work with DCTA on plans to move membership and sales tax money to the responsibility of Corinth, if Corinth is considering membership in DCA and wants to get a train station, so we give them the gift that we're not using. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Freirenza?
I do have a couple of things I'd like to get an update on, if you can, please. I'd like to see if we can get an update on the trails and the use of mobility, I know you had a, a public service announcement in the update, but I'd like to see if there, if we could give an update on the regulations again, put it out there, my concern is, I've had a couple of people talk to me about children using these scooters or these small mobility devices, I'm trying to get used to using it, but they're, they're still not using, some of them aren't using helmets, some of them are still going through the streets, through the crossings without walking, there are a few that are not using signals or anything to let people know they're behind them, a couple of people have almost been hit, so I'd like to kinda get an idea about the education, see what kinda complaints we're getting.
Future agenda.
Get an update there, I'd like to get an update on, we had an incident, or a potential incident at, I believe, Highland Village, just past, just east of Highland Village Road on Willow Creek, where that trail crosses by the, in the utility easement, car didn't see a pedestrian or a mobility device, almost hit the person, see what we can do there, what options we have available to us to do something there for notification, and then a discussion on the school system and the crossing guard at Highland Village Road in Brazos, and the opportunity there, and then finally, I'd like to see if we can have a discussion, a lady came twice to us regarding park fees at Pilot Knoll Park, and sent us all an email, I'd like to see if we can get a discussion about that, and get an update of what we're doing there, see where we are, see if we can look at something for, for them, and as well as get an update on the status of the core and the boat docks along the, along the shoreline.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody, anybody else? Nobody else? Okay, all right, well, if no one else, then we are adjourned at 9:41.